Ladies and gentlemen, before we begin, please turn off your cellphone or use the silent feature. Please note that today's hearing is being livestreamed on YouTube as part of a pilot project. Welcome. In accordance with Section 45 and 53 of the Planning Act 1990 as amended, this meeting of the Committee of Adjustment for the City of Toronto is called to order. The Committee of Adjustments considers applications for minor variances from the provisions of the zoning bylaw, permissions to extend or alter lawful non-conforming uses, and consent to create new laws. Hearing procedure. To ensure a fair and timely hearing, I will vet the agenda to determine which applications can be dealt with immediately and which applications require more in-depth review. I will call each item in the order listed on the agenda and ask if anyone other than the agent or applicant is present in interest and wishes to address the committee. If there are people in interest, the matter will be held until all non-contested applications have been cleared from the agenda. If your item is held, we strongly advise you to meet with the interested parties outside of the hearing room in an effort to resolve any outstanding issues. If there are no person present in interest, the agent or applicant will proceed with their application if required. The committee may ask questions and they will take the matter into the committee for a decision. Each speaker, including the agent or applicant, will be given a maximum of five minutes to address the committee. When addressing the committee, please come forward to the podium, clearly state your name and address, and file Decision Request Card, which I believe is available at the end of this horseshoe, so that we have correct information for our records. If you have written submission that you read from, please hand it in to Deputy Secretary Treasurer when you are done, who is seated on my right, or a member of her staff. First, the applicant agent will make a presentation of the committee of the application as submitted. Then individuals either in support or opposed to the application will be allowed to speak. If there are several speakers sharing the same view, please select a spokesperson to present the group's opinion. We want to hear your views, however, covering the same points will not advance your cause. Committee members may ask questions of each speaker at the end of their presentation. When all speakers are finished, the applicant has an opportunity to rebut only the related issues that were raised. The matter will then be taken into the committee for a decision. This will mark the end of all discussion. Please remember to confine your comments or your remarks to the matters outlined in the application. If you do not agree with the committee's decision, you may file an appeal. Almost all appeals will be dealt with by a tribunal called the Toronto Local Appeal Body, or T-Lab. For more information in the T-Lab, please visit their website or the CFA website. In order to receive a copy of the committee's decision and to be informed of all appeal proceedings, you must fill out Decision Request Card referred to earlier. Please include your email address, as T-Lab will be sending notification appeal updates by email. Please leave your completed form with Deputy Secretary Treasurer or a member of her staff before leaving today. Decisions will be mailed within three business days. Okay, so now we move forward with confirmation of last meeting minutes. Panel members?
Through you, Madam Chair, I would move adoption of the minutes.
Okay, so motion to adopt the minutes has been moved by Ms. Omen. Do we have a seconder? Second Mr. Russell, all in favor? Okay, so the minutes have been adopted. Declaration of interest, panel members or staff?
Not at this time.
Okay, so we have no declaration of interest at this time. Madam Deputy Secretary Treasurer, are there any files to be closed today? Are there any applicants who wish to draw the application at the hearing? Differral request, Madam Deputy Secretary Treasurer, do we have any items? Did you receive any requests for deferrals?
Not for this morning, no.
Okay. Are there any requests from deferrals at the hearing today? Okay, if you can perhaps come up then. Are you the agent or applicant? Are you requesting deferral? Okay, so if you can please come up to the... Sorry?
Not the applicant.
You're the neighbor? Which applications are you here to? Sorry, can you just, can you come up to the podium so we can hear you clearer? Which item are you referring to?
Seven D Road. Seven D Road, number eight. Seven D Road.
Okay, seven D Road. Do we have the agent or applicant here for this item? Item number eight? Seven D Road, agent or applicant? Okay, so the agent or applicant is not here, so we're just gonna hold you down until we vet the agenda and hopefully they'll show up and then we'll deal with the deferral. Okay, thank you. Okay, so just before we proceed with vetting of the agenda, please note that the committee will not be entertaining any extensive revisions to the proposals today. In the instance that your application does have extensive revisions, we will defer the applications to assure that all revisions accurate and that all interested parties are informed of the changes. Okay, so I'll proceed with vetting the agenda. Item number one, 67 Yon Richmond Street West, do we have the agent or applicant here? Do we have any parties in interest of this application, 67 Yon Richmond Street? Item number two, 369 Gray Street, do we have the agent or applicant here? Do we have any interested parties in this application, 369 Gray Street? Item number three, 332 Sororine Avenue, agent or applicant, do we have any parties in interest? Okay, I believe this is sister application, 330 Sororine Avenue. Okay, do we have any parties in interest, 330 Sororine Avenue? Item number five, 114 Hudson Drive, agent or applicant? Okay, do we have any parties in interest, 114 Hudson Drive? Okay, so that item will be held. Once again, so we strongly advise you to speak to the agent outside of the hearing room to resolve any outstanding issues. Item number six, 207 Coxwell Avenue, do we have the agent or applicant here? Okay, do we have any parties in interest? 207 Coxwell Avenue? No. Item number seven, 11 Forest Ridge Drive, do we have the agent or applicant here? Do we have any parties in interest? Okay, so that item will be also held. So once again, we strongly advise you to step outside. Perhaps if the parties in interest could put up their hand, because I believe the agent is trying to locate you. Okay, sorry, if you can put up your hand. Okay. Great. Item number eight, Seven Deep Road, Diepe Road? Diepe Road, do we have the agent or applicant here? Not, and so we have parties in interest, so this item is going to be held and we're just gonna wait for the agent to show up. Item number nine, 26 Butter Nut Street, do we have the agent or applicant here? Do we have any parties in interest? 26 Butter Nut Street? Item number 10, 271 Claremont Street, agent or applicant, do we have any parties in interest? Two seven... Yep, okay. So that item will be also held, so we ask you to strong, we strongly advise you to step outside, discuss any outstanding issues. Item number 11, 32 Herbert Avenue, do we have the agent or applicant here? Okay, do we have any parties in interest? 32 Herbert Avenue? Item number 12, 22 Grandview Avenue, agent or applicant? Okay, do we have any parties in interest? Okay, so 22 Grandview Avenue is also going to be held, so once again, we strongly advise you to step outside, discuss any outstanding issues. Item number 13, 27 Thollis Avenue, agent or applicant, do we have any parties in interest? 27 Thollis Avenue? No. Item number 14, 713 George Street East, agent or applicant, do we have any parties in interest? 713 George Street East? Item number 15, 17 Maplewood Avenue, do we have the agent or applicant here? Do we have any parties in interest? 17 Maplewood Avenue? Item number 16, 60 Fern Avenue, do we have the agent or applicant here? 16 Fern Avenue? Okay, do we have any parties in interest for 16 Fern Avenue? Okay, so item will be held for the agent to show up. Item number 17, 818 Eastern Avenue, do we have the agent or applicant here? Do we have any parties in interest? 818 Eastern Avenue? Item number 18, 24 Mercer Street, agent or applicant? Okay, do we have any parties in interest? 24 Mercer Streets? Item number 19, 162 Madison Avenue, do we have the agent or applicant here? Okay, do we have any parties in interest? 162 Madison Avenue? Item number 26, 64 Salmon Avenue, agent or applicant, do we have any parties in interest? 64 Salmon Avenue? Okay, so that is it for our morning time slot. So the items that are being held include item number five, 114 Hudson Drive? Item number seven, 11 Forest Ridge Drive? Item number eight, Seven Deep Road? Diepe Road? Item, do we have the agent here for Diepe Road? No. Item number 10, 271 Claremont Street, do we have, that item, sorry, will also be held? Item number 12, 22 Grandview Avenue is going to be held? And then item number 16, 60 Fern Avenue, has the agent shown up last? Yep? Okay, so that item will hear right away. Okay, so now we'll proceed with item number one, 67 Yon Richmond Street West.
Hello, good morning.
Officer, just before you proceed, I'll just state what the committee has in front of us.
Okay.
So we have, we have the minutes from the May 17, 2018 public hearing. We have a plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, elevations. We have the letter from the agent dated May 7. We have a staff report from community planning dated May 11. We also have a staff report from community planning dated November 26. And then we have correspondence and opposition from 675 Richmond Street West. Okay, if you can please introduce yourself?
Thank you. My name is Tyrell Wong, and I am the agent for the applicant.
Okay.
The proposed here is a third floor addition with a revised secondary unit in the basement, an addition of a basement window well and a front covered awning.
Okay, so before you proceed, I'm just gonna ask panel members if it's necessary to do a presentation. Panel members? Would you like a presentation? No? So we'll just proceed directly with questions. That'll be easy.
Okay, great.
Okay, panel members, do you have any questions?
Is he seeing the planning report?
I saw the first planning report from May, and since the project hadn't changed, I didn't get a chance to see the second one, did it change?
Report of on November the 19th, which...
Does it include the...
It's looking for a condition?
Yes, so the two conditions on the first one, is it the same?
This is one condition on this one.
So they removed the permanent OPEC screening condition?
Okay, so I agree with this condition. Basically, the 10.84 meters is what is proposed. The setback for the area on the third floor, there is no intention of adding any further gross floor area.
Okay.
And your variance number two, you're asking for zero meters east and west side setback where you should have had two meters and a secondary seat.
It is a row house, so on both sides it's zero currently. And so the third floor, it would be impossible to set it back two meters on either side to create a space that you could use. So it's just keeping in line vertically with what is below, is the intention.
Any other questions? I have a question in regards to variance number three, so the front yard encroachment, is that an existing condition, so you're not building beyond the existing footprint of the porch?
The idea of the encroachment is, there's an existing window well that we're replacing that creates part of that encroachment below grade. And then we have the idea, there's a small awning that's just over the front door. I have a picture of it if you'd like to see it.
Sure, if you can put on the projector?
Sure.
Okay, okay, thank you very much. Panel members, any other questions? Okay, no more questions. We're in committee, discussion or a motion?
I think what's being proposed can be considered minor and it's certainly not out of character with what's in the neighborhood, in my opinion. The existing FSI is 130.92 meters squared, so it's not usually substantial. And if there's no other comments, I'd be prepared to make a motion to approve the application, subject to the condition and the planning report dated November 19.
Okay, so motion to approve, including the November 15 planning condition, has been moved by Ms. Hayes. Do we have a seconder? Okay, Second Mr. Carlson, all in favor? So the application has been approved. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Item number two, 369 Gray Street? The committee has in front of us, plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, elevations. We have a staff report from community planning dated November 26. And then we have correspondence and support from 369 Gray Street, as well as four form letters and support from various owners and occupants on Gray Street. Okay, if you can please introduce yourself?
My name is Roy Vance. I'm with Fluid Living Studio, acting as agent on behalf of the client.
Okay, so panel members, would you like a presentation or we'll go directly with questions? We'll go directly with questions.
Okay.
Okay, any questions?
Is there any way to improve the rear yard landscaping situation? The deck is taking up the whole, most of the yard?
Yeah, it's a pre-existing condition. The clients bought it with the deck. And as you can see, it's a very tiny lot to begin with and...
So that's pre-existing, the point 0.4?
You're aware of the planning report?
Actually, I'm not.
Okay, so it basically specifies one condition in regards to maximum depth of 14 meters, exclusive of the deck.
So this is a recommendation. So if I interpret this correctly, exclusive of the third floor decks proposed...
It's as per the submitted plans?
Yep.
Just planning wants to tie them to plans?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, no more questions, discussion or a motion?
Through you, Madam Chair, if my colleagues don't have any comments. I think that what's being proposed here fits within the context of the neighborhood. It also has some support from the neighbors. So I would be prepared to move approval, including the condition in the planning report dated, is it 19th? November 19th?
Okay, so motion to approve, including the November 19th planning condition, has been moved by Ms. Omen. Do we have a seconder?
Second.
Second by Mr. Russell, all in favor? So the application has been approved. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item number three, 332 Sororine Avenue? And we're just gonna deal with the two applications, including the 330 Sororine Avenue sister application together. Okay, so before you proceed, I'll just mention what the committee has in front of us for both items. We have a plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, elevations. We have correspondence from the agent. We have, and also we have email correspondence from community planning dated July 12. If you can please introduce yourself?
I'm Tarver Oestrod. I'm an architect here on behalf of both owners of 330 and 332 Sororine.
Okay, and we'll also proceed with question unless panel members want a presentation.
Okay.
Panel members?
You're moving your floor space index almost twice the amount of the space. Why is it necessary, why is it minor?
Well, in both cases, the addition is basically a full third story. The existing building itself doesn't comply with the floor space index, and that's pretty typical of the neighborhood. I've done many, many, many projects in this neighborhood, the surrounding neighborhoods, and they're always requesting that variance. Existing building does comply, so that's why it seems out of whack. But essentially, it's a full third story added to both houses, not increasing the footprint at all.
Your permitted height is 7.5, are you moving to 11.58?
I believe, actually, on height, there is the, under 5692013, the max permitted height is 10 meters. Are you talking about the front elevation? Oh, the exterior main walls? Yeah, we, we had a consultation with urban planning, and one of the things that we did at their request was basically slope back the third story front face. That's something that they asked for and the owners or the applicants agreed to in order to try to address that. So in a sense, it creates sort of the, the front vertical wall is a two stories and then the third is basically sloped back like a roof line.
8.31 on your, on your document here, let's go to 8.3. A3.1 and A3.2. Can you just put it on the, put it on the screen so we can... The, that thing on the top, the, is it a chimney or...
Yeah, I can describe it. It's a clear story. So what it is, basically it's an extension. The idea is to try to take, make use of natural ventilation. So there's operable windows that open, brings in natural light, and it's, it's just an extension above the roof line in order to do that, rather than using a skylight.
Is this included in the height variance?
Yeah, in the overall height, yes.
Is it included in the overall?
Yes, it's included in the requested variance. Yeah, the overall, which is 11.58 includes that.
Okay.
Clear story. So the actual roof level is lower than that.
All right, thank you.
So what's the existing FSI?
Pardon me?
What's the existing FSI?
It is basically three row houses to the north. Is this basically a gap between the house to the north?
No, floor sp...
Oh, sorry, I'm sorry.
Floor space index, what's the existing floor space index? So it seems that you're adding 58.55 meters squared?
Uh, let's get to the...
Is that correct?
Here, let me just get to the...
Because you said it's already over the allowable for variance number one?
Yeah, I mean, right now, the current, and I'll just take, say, 330 for an example. The current ground floor is, if you want square meters, it's 54.55 square meters. The second floor is an additional 54.55 square meters. And then the third floor is about 58.55. So it's basically, the current is probably about 109 square meters.
Okay.
And that's 330, 332 is similar.
Okay, any other questions, panel members? No. Any other questions for item number...
No, revised plans, revised plans, what did you change in the revised plans, nothing?
Revised plans, I think the last revision was just the adjustment on the third floor, when we sloped back the third story front wall. That was the last revision that we did in consultation with urban planning.
Or did that affect the whole of the plan?
No, that's...
I think it's the current application, right? It's the plans that we have in file.
Yeah, that's reflected in the current app.
Do we have any questions in regards to item number four, 330 Sororine Avenue, the application? There, yeah, it's...
Yeah, they're essentially just mirror imaged, pretty much.
Okay, panel members, no questions? Okay, so we're in committee, so first we're gonna discuss item number three, 332 Sororine Avenue? Or a motion, discussion or a motion?
My only real comment is perhaps we should consider a condition that the height be exclusive of the, that third story on the top, just...
Just tie it back to a drawing?
Tie it to the drawing or condition of that, the exclusive of that variance before the height of the main roof.
I think that's a great idea, so let's say drawing A3.1, which is the front elevation?
Yeah, tie, tie each one to the side elevation. Front, side, bit more for the conversation.
Um, yeah, so A3.1. Okay, um, yes? Yeah?
I, I think that what Mr. Carlson has proposed is a good idea in terms of the application itself. We've got an apartment building across the street. We have another one a few doors down. There are a lot of additions, so I don't think that what's being proposed is out of character for either one of these applications.
Mm-hmm.
I'm not sure if Mr. Carlson is ready to move a motion or...
No other questions? Nope. So on item number three, I would move approval, subject to condition that it be constructed substantially in accordance with drawing A3.1 dated July 16.
You can also do the site elevation because it shows the size of the...
Okay, but side?
Uh, third story, yeah. So there's also 3.4 as well. It just shows how long that is.
Okay, 3.1 and 3.4.
Okay, so a motion to approve, including the outlined condition in terms of applying it to plans, has been moved by Mr. Carlson. Do we have a seconder? Okay, so second by Ms. Hayes, all in favor? So the application has been approved, okay? For item number four, 330 Sororine Avenue? Discussion or a motion? Go ahead.
I would move same motion approving the application, in this case tying to 3.1A
Okay, so a motion to approve, including the outlined condition, has been moved by Mr. Carlson. Do we have a seconder? Second by Ms. Hayes, all in favor? So the application has been approved. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item number five is being held. Item number six, 207 Coxwell Avenue, do we have, if we have the agent, please come up? Okay, so the committee has in front of us, plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, elevations, and then we have three form letters in support from 205 to 11 and 215 Coxwell Avenue. Okay, if you can please introduce yourself?
Hi, good morning, committee members. My name is Graham Barrett. I'm the agent for the owners. I have a full presentation if you'd like, or I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
We'll proceed with question unless the panel members want a presentation. Okay, panel members, do you have any questions?
Your, your front yard setback, you, you want to move back, move forward by 1.8 meters?
The front yard setback's an existing condition. It's a front porch that was enclosed sometime before 2001 by previous owners. Basically, it's just to legalize that existing front yard setback. There's also a small landing that was built a long time ago there as well that encroaches into city property, and that's being removed and replaced by two small steps so that it is within the property and no longer encroaching.
Any other questions?
Madam Chair, if there are no further questions by any member of the committee, I'd move for approval of this application in that it's indeed minor, made the foretest, and it's completed in context of the neighborhood.
Okay. Okay, so a motion to approve has been moved by Mr. Russell, second by Ms. Carlson, all in favor? So the, sorry, second by Ms. Omen, all in favor? So the application has been approved, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Item number seven is being held. Item number eight, Seven Deep Road, do we have the agent or applicant? Sorry, I believe the item is being held because there are parties contesting this application. Are the parties in the room?
Number eight or number seven?
Number seven. Number... Number seven, number eight, sorry.
Number eight.
Yeah, number eight.
Yeah.
So this item is being held, so we strongly advise you to step with the parties in interest outside of the hearing room. So let's, let's, let's have them have a discussion first, before, to see if the deferral is still needed. Okay, so item number eight is being held. Item number nine, 26 Butternut Street, do we have the agent applicant here? If they can please come up. Committee has in front of us, plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, elevations, we have a CFA decision, or two decisions affecting the subject property, we have a cover letter from the agent, we have staff report from community planning, as well as urban forestry, and then we have seven, signature petition and support from various owners and occupants on Butternut Street, as well as Jackman Avenue and Plater Boulevard, and then we have four form letters in support from various owners, including the, both directly adjacent neighbors of Butternut Street and 45 Brownie Avenue. If you can please introduce yourself?
Good morning, Madam Chair and members of committee. My name is May Luong. I'm the agent representing the property owner of 26 Butternut Street. Do you like a full presentation or...?
We'll just proceed with questions, unless the panel members want a presentation. Panel members?
So, could you just briefly summarize what the, this has had a previous approval?
Yes.
And this is to recognize some slight changes that resulted after or as part of that construction? Could you just focus in on what the exact change is?
Sure. So this application is two parts, I will focus, one part is for the garage, two-floor garage, and the other part is for the rear second-floor addition. And your question, I believe, is to focus on the changes of the garage. That was approved in 2013, and the, the client had built the garage according to plans with some slight deviations, which now is requiring this approval before you. So the changes mainly, the stairwells was previously approved for inside the garage internally, and now is outside the garage in order to access the second floor for storage. And the other major changes relate to architectural designs, such as the roof on the one side is no longer extending further down. It aligns with, with the, it's more symmetrical with the other side of the roof, and location of windows have changed, but they're all architectural design changes. The height remains the same, the GFA is actually smaller than what was approved. The building dimensions are the same as what was approved previously.
Both the second-story addition, as well as the garage, are already built?
Yes.
So how come they weren't built according to plans? They were approved twice.
Yes, the, the property owner had built it, and they had built it in the thinking of it was similar and substantially in accordance, and so when they went with the building inspector and spoke to him, he, it was his interpretation that it wasn't close enough, and had requested for this additional approval to recognize it.
But the reality is that there were two approvals before, and then he went off and built it differently.
Yes, that was a misunderstanding on the property owner's part, and as such, this is the reason why we are here. We've been working with staff, planning staff and committee staff on this, and as well as the building official, to help best to rectify the situation.
So they build outside the, the basis of the building permit that was issued for the property?
Yes, because the stairwell, stairwell is now located outside of the...
So they didn't have a permit to build this, they built outside the permit that was issued?
Yes.
Also, it seems that, I'm not sure where I got this from, but it's in my notes that the, I believe the approved FSI was at 252 meters squared, 0.79 times area of the lot, right? And now you're asking for 260? So that was the approval?
Sorry.
No, I'm actually looking at the May 2013, and it shows .175 times the area for the garage, which is 55.8 square meters.
So now we're speaking about the garage, which was approved in 2013, and with that approval, they got approval for 55.8 square meters? And currently, we're asking for 55.1 square meters for the garage.
I was speaking to the two-story rear addition that was...
The two-story addition has not yet been built.
Oh, has not yet been...
This is, this is the second piece of the minor variance application.
This two-story rear addition for the garage has not been built, but the rest of the house, everything has been built.
So how come you're still asking for a higher FSI than already approved for the two-story rear addition, if it hasn't been built?
The garage is built.
So this is for...
And then this two-story addition has not been built. So in total, the FSI will be larger than what was previously approved, because the previous approval in 2013 only dealt with the garage.
There's one in 2010, which is for rear second story and a third-story dormer, so they approved .79 times the area?
Yes, in 2010, they received approval for the house addition, but that was, that addition was not built.
Was not built.
It's not built, and is now abandoned.
So how come they just won't stick to the already approved at 0.79 times?
Because the zero point, so, are you speaking to the 0.79?
Yes.
The 0.79, which was approved for the second-story addition, was only for the addition and not the garage. The 2010 approval was only for the addition of the house and not the garage. The 2013 approval was only for the garage and not the house. So this current application before you is the total of the house addition and the garage, and therefore, the GFA, the FSI is 0.82, which is the combination of the garage and the, the house expansion.
So then in terms of the second-story addition, it will be built according to what was previously approved? And that's my understanding, right?
The second-story addition is, is a slight, is a different design.
Okay.
It's slightly different from what was approved in 2010. 2010 application...
In terms of size or just design?
It's just a slightly different, slightly different design and size. It's slightly larger than 2010 approval, but that approval is, is no longer valid because of the new zoning bylaw in, in place. So that approval is, has been abandoned, and the current application before you is, is what we're requesting for.
There, there appear to be a lot of additions in the area. Can you tell us what you're asking for, how that compares? Do you have any examples?
Yes, so we are asking for a total, with the addition and the garage, of 0.82 times the lot area. I've looked at the immediate area along Arundale, Browning, Butternut, Plater, and a lot of the additions are zero, between 0.77 times to, up to 1 point, there was one, 1.04 times the lot area. A lot of the expansions in the area are within the 0.8 times lot area requests.
And you're aware of the conditions planning is looking for?
Yes, we've been speaking and working with planning staff, and I have read the report, and we are okay with their conditions.
Okay, thank you.
Now, why do you need, why do you need a second story in the garage? Are you doing some work up there or something?
Yes, it's, it's a shed for storage and for a work table to, to do hobby work.
You're gonna have parties inside the garage?
No parties, no. There will be no servicing connecting to, to the garage.
Any other questions?
Are we in committee, Madam Chair?
Any other questions?
No.
No more questions, we're in committee, discussion?
Through you, Madam Chair. In terms of coming back for variances and things not being built the way they've been approved, I'm not very supportive of that. Having said that, as a committee, we're asked to look at the planning merits. And in looking in the area, there are a lot of additions, very similar additions. And I don't feel that what's being proposed is necessarily out of context with what's existing in the surrounding area. So I, and I think with the planning conditions, which are basically the same conditions as was, as they had put forward with the last approval, or the last application, I, I would suggest that what's being proposed is reasonable.
Any other comments?
If, if... I would, I would agree. With all the comments with respect to building outside of permit, but I think the variance is being requested, I would agree with my colleague, are not out of, do not represent something that would be out of character with the neighborhood as it exists at the moment.
So if, if there are no further comments, Madam Chair, I'd be prepared to move a motion?
Yeah, I mean, my only, my only concern is the soft landscaping in the rear. But because there's already an existing, depth of the house already kind of an existing condition, there's not much that can be done to alleviate that situation. You can go ahead.
All right, through you, Madam Chair. For the reasons stated previously, I would be prepared to move approval of the application, including forestry condition number two and the conditions in the planning report dated November 22nd.
Okay, so a motion to approve including the forestry condition, as well as planning conditions, which are three conditions included in the November 22nd report, has been moved by Ms. Omen. Do we have a seconder?
Second.
Second by Ms. Hayes, all in favor? So the application has been approved, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Item number 10 is being held. Item number 11, 32 Herbert Avenue. The committee has in front of us, plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, elevations. We have precedents from variances, for variances that were submitted by the agent. We have six form letters in support from various owners and occupants on Herbert Avenue, including the one directly adjacent number 34. And then we have correspondence and concern from 28 Herbert Avenue. If you can please introduce yourself?
Good morning. My name is Michael Boxer, and I'm the architect working with the owners at 2 Herbert.
Okay, so we'll just proceed directly with questions, unless panel members want a presentation. Panel members, questions?
Yeah, I, variance number one and variance number two, you're asking from height, main walls outside of the, of, of the requirement permitted height. Why do you need the extra height?
Well, the, the, the third floor addition, there's currently a third floor with a not acceptable headroom on the third floor. It's, it's about just under six feet, so we're adding 2.8 to the height of the peak of the pitched roof so that we can get an adequate living space in the third floor.
So, the examples that you provided to us of other approvals, from a wall height perspective, I don't see anything on Herbert. One on Elmer. These other streets, how close are they to, to, like, on the map we have, I don't see the street names, it's just proximity, are they... Like Waverly and Kippen?
Diameter that we received, I guess it's about 500, 500 meters in diameter?
Thank you.
So there's a, yeah, they are spread out. We, we included more of them in the beaches area. Given that Herbert is a short street, it's, it's sort of from Queen up to the top, and there was, there were three or four other committee of adjustment approval hearings, but I think number 14 was, that's, 73 Herbert, was related to the floor space index and the side lot line, but yeah, it wasn't the main wall height.
I also believe that you numbered the examples, right? The numbers are also included, sorry. That's okay.
I apologize, sorry.
We've got these this morning, so...
Oh, I see, okay. The existing side walls are, are currently within 2.8 of the proposal, so with the, and the front, there's a new dormer at the front of the house with that, that gabled dormer and, and sloping away from the street.
So this, oh, not this, never mind.
Just regarding Clyde Robinson's email, I believe, regarding cedar shingles? Are you aware of that one?
Yes, now, he, he submitted a letter of approval, which we, we received last night, and then we also have the other immediate neighbor, which we received. The, yeah, he's had discussions with, with our, with the owners regarding tree protection, which is a necessary requirement by the city, and the other is that there be cedar shingles used in the front dormer, I think is what it says.
Yeah, to keep within character of the existing homes.
And our, our owner, as you can see from the design of the front facade, is very much in keeping with the tradition of the street. In fact, the house is being very mod, not being modified all that much. And so cedar shingles or a, a simulated fabricated product would be something they've talked about.
Okay, and then he also talks about two trees in the front and one in the back, in terms of protecting them? I'm, I'm assuming that...
They are very valuable to the owners of the property, and they, and, and will insist on them being protected and maintained.
We don't have, oh, sorry.
No forestry.
No forestry condition.
I believe they're not included in the survey. I can't see them on the survey.
But you will be taking the necessary steps to protect them?
Absolutely.
Okay.
You could include a forestry one. Do you know the front tree is publicly owned or privately owned?
I'm just looking for the survey.
It must be publicly owned.
It's privately owned.
It's private, the front one? So, so we can include forestry condition?
Number three.
On number three, two. Two? Yeah, it's the submission of the application to... Okay, two, sorry. Okay, forestry admission two. Any other questions? No more questions? Okay, okay, so we're in committee, discussion or a motion?
I think this is appropriate to its context. The main wall height variance is significant, but there not being a height variance overall, and it is technically a flat roof, but it's, the appearance of that has been mitigated. I am uncomfortable.
Yeah, so, and just before, and there is a step back in the rear with the deck, so in terms of massing in the rear and shadowing impacts, I think that's somewhat mitigated. in terms of massing in the rare and shadowing impacts, I think that's somewhat mitigated. Okay.
So if there's no further comments, I would move approval of the application subject to forestry condition number two with reference to the tree in the front.
I would second that. There's actually two trees in the front and one in the rear.
Okay, two trees in the front, one in the rear, that were not identified by urban forestry.
Okay, so motion, a motion to approve, including forestry condition number two, apply to front and rear trees.
They've changed their numbering.
So in our letter, number two deals with privately owned trees.
The numbering has actually been.
Always been changed.
Sort of sending these long manos.
Well, the, the condition can read just submission of a complete application for a permit to enter or remove a privately owned tree, trees as per the City of Toronto Municipal Code, chapter 813. Okay, so a motion to approve, including the forestry condition number two, has been moved by Mr. Carlson, second by Ms. Omen, all in favor. So the application has been approved. Thank you very much. Okay, item number 12 is being held. Item number 13, 27 Folless Avenue, if we can have the agent or applicant please come up. The committee has in front of us plan of survey, site plan, floor plans elevations. We have support material from the agent, and then we have correspondence and support from 25 Folless Avenue, as well as a 30 signature petition in opposition that has been filed with committee of adjustments dated, received November 21st. If you can please introduce yourself.
I'm chair and panel. I'm Spencer Tool, I'm here as counsel for Mr. Lala, and I've got Mr. DiMartino here as well.
Okay, panel members, we'll just proceed with questions unless panel members want a presentation. Panel members, do you have any questions?
Yeah, the semi-detached, but you need, you're looking for a height which is 2.2 meters, 2.08 meters above the requirement. How does that fit in with the present condition? You have a semi-detached.
Correct.
Right, and you're looking in, in your, in your variances, you're looking for height many, main walls?
Yes, we're looking for.
Which is two, two meters beyond what is normally required. What is there presently?
It has it on the drawing. So 1.6 meters higher than the existing condition.
How does that fit in with, it's a semi-detached, how does that fit in with the other building?
In regard, in regards to the area, it's a semi-detached dwelling, you have to have a slope away from the party wall, so if you keep sloping it down, you need a higher sidewall so that you have headroom and non-wasted space within that area. In comparison, the house is on Folless, 33 Folless has it at 9.77, 30 Folless has it at 10 meters, and we're requesting the 9.58.
So which property has it at 10 meters?
If you look at the notice of, the comparable notice document, you can see that we're asking for 9.58, so we are the lowest wall on the street in comparison to the notice of decisions that were made prior.
Is that the, is that the semi that's also asymmetrical with its party wall neighbor? Because there, I believe there's one sets of semis where.
Yeah, there's a, just a couple doors down.
Is that number?
That's 33.
That's 33?
Yep.
Okay.
And then 30 has it at 10 meters, which is much higher than us. So we, we've walked with our, the community, we've, step by step, we went through the drawings with them just to make sure that everybody was on board. We received 30.
Oh, sorry, it's in support, I said in opposition, right?
Yeah. We've received support from 30 of our neighbors.
And there's a, you have a, a letter on, from the daughter of your.
Of the power of attorney. So she's in support too, and we walked them through all the materials, the heights and everything we were going to do for the house.
Okay, any other questions? No more questions, discussion or motion?
Madam Chair, this appears to be in context with the neighborhood. I'm satisfied that it meets the four tests and is in the character of the neighborhood, and the neighbors are satisfied that the plans as discussed with them, that, that it meets the character of the neighborhood. As a result, if my friends don't have any others, any, any of the information to submit, I would move for approval of the application.
Other comments?
I, just that, yeah, in case for semi asymmetric with a fairly significant variance, the neighbors' agreement is quite significant.
Okay, so we have a motion tabled by Mr. Russell to approve the variance application. Do we have a second there?
I will.
Okay, so Ms. Hayes, all in favor? So the application's been approved. Thank you very much. Sorry for my mistake. Item number 14, 713 George Street East. The committee has in front of us plan of survey, site plan, floor plans elevations. We have email correspondence from city planning dated August 29th, as well as, we have a staff report from community planning dated November 26th, and then we have correspondence and support from 121st Avenue as well as 134 First Avenue. If you can please introduce yourself.
My name is Pune Dirakshan from KFA, Architect and Planners. I'm the agent representing my client, donor of 713 Gerard Street.
Okay, so we'll proceed with questions unless panel members want a presentation. Panel members, do you have any questions?
No, are you aware of the planning, planning report?
Yes.
With the five conditions?
Yes.
Okay. And so, and you're, I'm assuming the owner or? The designer, okay. Okay. Okay, any, any other questions or comments?
First, just so that you, you know, we had noticed the spelling error, I don't know if it was spelling error on your first line.
Yeah, so it's a restaurant.
Restaurant.
Okay, any other questions?
The patio, you were looking for to move up to 40.77 meters squared. Why do you need such a big patio?
The client wanted the design that they, they liked, and that's why they have these square meters. And there is, there is enough space to have, yeah.
But any second variance, you're looking for, your, your, your location is rather than 30 meters, you're looking 4.7 meters from Malatine's residential zone. Do you think that's minor?
Yes, I believe so. That's because the property on the south side of the property is basically the administrative portion of the church still, is the man's house, and I also like to note that there's a parking lot in front of that man's house, and the residential unit would be on the south side of that property. So there is like 20, 12 meters approximately for the parking lot, plus another four, five meters, so I believe that's a good distance. Also, please note that the first residential unit in the residential zone would be approximately 26 meters away, the lot line would be away from the lot line of the patio. And also, that's the rooming house. So we have the letter of support of the actual residential unit right beside that in the south side at 139, at 134 First Avenue, and they provided us with the, with their support for this.
Do you have any other examples of patios on Gerard Street, on that side of the street?
Other examples? I looked at a few, and there are similar patios on Gerard Street, actually, but I don't have it with me at the moment, but yes, there are.
Any other questions?
The planning conditions, are you, there's no music, no, your hours of operation is until what, eight, 9:30?
Yes, that's correct.
You're willing to meet these conditions?
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions? No more questions, we're in committee discussion or motion?
Through you, Madam Chair. What's being proposed is, is reasonable, it fits within the context of that area, it's got the support of the people behind the church. It's, it's, it's kind of tucked in against a building on the one side, so with the planning conditions in the report dated November 22nd, I would be prepared to move approval.
Okay, so motion.
I'm just kind of, at 9:30 PM, I just wondered if you would be willing to extend it to 11 o'clock, because somebody closed the restaurant at 9:30, it's really.
I mean, they don't have to close the restaurant, they can just close the patio.
Close the patio, okay.
I'm okay. I, I mean, having seen scenarios in the past with patios that are open till 11, it can be problematic with the noise, so I would, I would leave it at 9:30, I think.
Especially on Saturday.
Bylaw is for 11, but it is basically a residential area, and I think the appropriate path would be keep the limit at three years and look at a later time if it's desired then.
Yeah, I, I would just go with what's in the planning report. That would be my motion.
Okay, so no more discussion, so we have a motion that's been tabled, including the November 22nd report, planning conditions, has been moved, has been moved by Ms. Omen, second by Ms. Hayes, all in favor. So the application has been approved. Thank you very much, thank you. Item number 15.
And you skipped over number 12?
That item is being held.
Okay.
Item number 15, 17 Maplewood Avenue. The committee has in front of us plan of survey, site plan, floor plans elevations. We have the cover letter from the agent, and then we have a parking study from the municipal infrastructure group. If you can please introduce yourself.
Good morning, members. My name is Brian Parker. I am a registered planner here today on behalf of Rose of Sharon, Ontario Retirement Community, the owners of this property. This is a built property. It contains a 90-unit residential complex and a 60-bed long-term care facility. And we are here today on the technical issue of the rate of parking attributable to the long-term care facility.
Okay, so panel members, do you have any questions?
Mr. Parker, your parking, full parking spaces for a retirement place, where staff comes in, visitors, where do they park?
Yes, they park in the underground parking garage. The long-term care facility, which commenced operations in 2011, is supplied with four parking fobs for the underground garage, two for the nursing staff, one for the resident doctor, and when, and one for the cleaning staff from time to time. There are also an abundance of street parking, and the, that is the current operating scenario of the long-term care facility since its inception in 2011. On-site parking demand was studied by the transportation planner. Meetings have been held, I would also advise you, between city planning staff. This is essentially a housekeeping matter related to a current draft plan of condominium, and Robert Lee, the transportation, senior transportation planner for the city, has reviewed the parking study and I, and has signed off to us on its appropriateness, and that sign off was to the city's plant, planning department, May Wang, on, on November 21.
Okay, thank you very much. Panel members, any other questions?
Okay, you did give us the allocation of those parking fobs, but how many staff are typically on-site simultaneously?
Related to the long-term care?
Related to the long-term.
No more than four, and at times less than four, three.
For 60 beds, really?
I'm sorry?
For 60 beds?
That's correct. The shift work.
Only three people for 60 beds?
Correct.
People parking.
Correct.
On staff, on-site, is what I was asking.
Well, it's been operations since 2011.
So is there any provision for visitors parking in either the residential or the condos or the long-term care?
No, there isn't. Resident, visitor parking occurs in the immediate proximity. That's correct. This, this building was developed pursuant to a site-specific zoning bylaw that required one space for each four beds.
Yeah.
And one space for each six residential units.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions? No other questions, we're in committee discussion.
Thank you.
I, it's, I think, I know the area very well, and I've visited the area, and it seemed like on-street parking is there available for, for visitors within the area. I know we're really drawing right on the line, but I'm satisfied that it meets a, it meets the test, the four tests, if we had the four parking spaces, based on the staffing, people taking, some staff takes TGC, the four staff, maybe administrative who uses the parking lot and is underground parking. I'm satisfied that the application meets the four tests, and so I would, it's indeed minor.
Any other comments? Are you gonna go ahead and move a motion?
I move a motion for.
So is there any other comments from the other panel members?
I would just say that based on the parking information that we have from the study, that there is a lot of parking on Von as well as on Maplewood, and from what I read, it looks like this property is in receivership as well, so to move the, and so you have the long-term care beds which are occupied, so there's already a pattern established for visitors, whereas you're potentially have a condominium building, which is, or which is now 50% occupied, and they will need additional parking for that building if units are to be sold. So I, it makes sense in the logistics of the property, because I assume these are long-term care beds for people that are infirm.
I would reiterate that to me, this is right on the line, and if this was not an established use, I would be really uncomfortable pushing it so low.
I agree.
I think, given the established use and given that it's being transferred to the residential, I think I can agree with this.
Okay, so a motion has been tabled to approve the variance application by Mr. Russell, second by Ms. Omen, all in favor. So the application's been approved, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item number 16 is being held. Item number 17, 181, sorry, 818 Eastern Avenue. I have 16, or is?
16 Eastern.
No, yes, Fern.
It is Fern.
Yeah, Fern. Is that, sorry, just one second. So for 16 Fern, do we? The agent's here?
Yeah, yeah, member.
Sorry, so we're gonna proceed with 16. Sorry, I have a highlight as, as being held, so the agent's here, so if they can please come up, and we have no party proposing this application or interest of this application. Item number 16, 60 Fern, the committee has in front of us plan of survey, site plan, and site plan. We have email correspondence from community planning, as well as correspondence in opposition from 42 Fern Avenue. If you can please introduce yourself.
My name is Hardal Deir, I'm an architect and a member of the church.
Okay, so. Well, we don't need a presentation, so we'll just proceed with questions because we're slightly behind, okay? And there's only one variance.
Yeah, my name is Hardal Deir.
Okay, yeah.
I'm an architect and a member of the church, and this small patio is behind the garage and behind the house.
Is it used?
Okay, parking?
Yeah, we have two parking for the priest.
So why can't you comply with the bylaw?
Oh, because we actually, the area, we covered between the garage and the existing house, very small area of 27 square meter, and we have provided, next, next door is a very big house, two-story house, garage. two-story house, garage and big patio. So we have provided some landscaping along the neighborhoods and all the trees, or aboriginal trees. And the reason why we put smaller patio, covered it with landscaping and concrete. It's muddy in the winter, in the summer.
Are you parking cars in that hard landscaping?
No, no, no parking.
So are you aware of...
Garage in the backside, rear side. Drive in the rear side. If I show on the plan.
Planning is suggesting that you put planters with some kind of vegetation on the east and west side?
Yes, yes.
Would be prepared to do that?
Yes.
We put a condition?
Yes, we have done it.
You have done it, or you will do it?
Yes. And we have the fences here. And this is actually, because the priests live there, the kids that go in the backside, the muddy under clay area. And it's not very good to use for the people now, the kids know the area. So that's why made it usable for the priest's children to use this area. Otherwise, it's creating all the mosquitoes, everything. And next door is a church. And even the church people, sometimes they step it in. It's muddy, it's very... It's not healthy now for the people, everybody. So that's why cleaned it. And we provide the landscaping on the... This neighborhood, although neighborhood has a very big house, and we have only one story on the rear side. And we had that's a church building. We like to go to everybody, neighbors. This is not a commercial buildings. So that's what we like to have a good atmosphere, good neighbors. That's why provided a small patio, it's not very big.
So we have a letter from 42 Fern Avenue that claims that in the summer of 2017, the backyard has been paved. So this hasn't been an existing condition for many years. This is quite recent. And we have photos.
Yes.
I'm not sure if you had a chance to go on the application information center to see what's on file?
Oh, no, I didn't go. But it was just when the site... It looks like everybody, neighbors are happy. And even the 1015 neighbors, they wrote the letter to us and all that, this for this small patio, want to clean out this mess and all the mosquitoes producing the muddy area. They appreciate for this one.
Sorry, if you can take a look at these photos, perhaps put on the projector. And you can explain to us what the photos represent. If you can just put on the projector. So what is that the picture of? Can you... Sir, can you take the blue sheet and put the other side on the projector? Turn it over, please. Turn the other side of the page. There's another picture on it. Yeah. Okay, can you explain that? Because it looks like it could be overflow parking from the temple next door. So where's your property?
So that's behind the garage?
Yeah, that's not his property, yeah. Yeah, it's somebody that's behind his... It's within the... It's yours within the steel bars?
The gates, are those your gates, right here, the black gates? Those are your gates? Shouldn't there be a garage there? No, but I mean, on the photos, how come there are gates and no garage? So where's the... Can you turn the photo again? The other photo, the other side? The other side? If you can flip the photo again? So where is your garage?
It's here. If you look how long this is, this piece.
Oh, yes, okay. Look at the... If you look at the... The car is behind the guy.
There's another garage right here. There's another garage right here.
Look at this picture.
He's saying this is his garage.
Yeah, this is garage here.
But the gates are not yours, then?
Oh, so the gates, the cars within the gates are not yours? Okay. The garage is behind the car.
What's showing in that picture here?
So how come the... Do you have a picture of the hard landscaping of your backyard? Perhaps on the phone? Google Maps or something? I mean, because... So the planning is asking for east and west side to be provided planters. But like, this is... The only thing that's... Yeah, but that's...
Do you have a picture of your yard? Do you have a picture of your yard?
And how about, so you're saying that you provide 9% of the rear yard as soft landscaping? Where's that 9%? But it's on your property? Are those planters, or... Planters included as soft landscaping? I don't believe so.
On your drawing A100, those little four boxes, are those planters? So what are those?
Yes? Is this not waiver?
How long has that hardscaping been in place? Yes. You put it in last year?
Well, was there before, grass? The only thing is that you illegally paved your backyard. Because you're supposed to... 25% of the rear yard is supposed to be maintained. Panel members, any other questions? Okay. Any other questions? Okay, so we're in committee now, discussion? Sorry? Oh, it's with a waiver?
I don't think this is either minor or within the intention of the bylaw. It's too much of this yard been covered for... There's already a garage there. I mean, I do believe that the intent isn't to park on it, but...
No parking, sadly.
Right, we're in committee, so you're not allowed to speak now. So this is...
There is just too much coverage here.
I would agree. I don't... I haven't heard any justification as to why. That can't be improved. I'm concerned about the amount of hardscaping.
Yeah, I echo my colleague's comments, especially considering that drainage is a huge issue for the city of Toronto and intensity of rain. Sorry?
What if you put in porous bricks or something?
Semi-permeable pavers?
I mean, practicality of doing it aside, I don't think it would meet the intention of the bylaw. The intention of the bylaw is soft landscaping, which permeable ameliorates it. But this is, practically speaking, this is almost complete coverage.
Well, from time to time, we have always, we have done some permanent pavement.
That's generally driveways.
Yeah, but let's risk what this is.
Well, this is the whole backyard, almost.
Yeah, this is...
What is... Can I get just get a committee for a minute?
Sorry? Yes, if you want to ask another question.
Yeah, what is the actual size? The measurements of that?
It's five meter by five meter. Five meter by five meter.
Five meter by five meter.
Twenty-five square meter and very small area. And say, that very big area, then the quarter different, you can have a... And everything there. So that's the reason now, if you step in, you'll just step in the mud.
Okay, thank you. And I can't see how like that 9% is actually being achieved. If that 9% is being achieved by planters, then...
What do we...
Sorry, we're in committee, so...
9% would be required to be achieved, whether it's indicated on the drawings or not. But I don't think the 9% is sufficient. Based on the plans we've seen, it's a small area that's available. And we're talking about far more than just a path across it. This is not for parking. This is not a path providing access. This is a patio covering the remaining open lot area.
Okay, any other comments?
Well, I'm somewhat on the fence. So I agree with Mr. Carlson. However, looking at the pictures and some of the adjacent properties seem to have paved too. Again, I mean, it would be nice if people actually went in for permits instead of doing things without permission. But that's not our only criteria. Or actually, that's not our criteria at all in terms of looking at this application or any other application.
So yeah, so if we do look at this application as though it's a proposal for change in the rear yard, I would say that it is substantial paving of the rear yard.
It is.
I would not... I'm not sure if I'll support this application. Especially considering the issues that we do have nowadays with flooding in the city.
I think that, you know, as we said, looking at it fresh, regardless of whether or not it's done, it doesn't matter. I'm not convinced there's a necessity to not have soft landscaping in excess of what's being proposed. Whether or not you'd be able to meet the full 25, I think there's... I think what's being requested is so minimal. Given the drainage issues and other things.
In terms of the pictures, it does look... Because the fence is, you know, open in sections. And it almost looks like there's shared parking coming through.
Well, I think that there's...
So I... Again, I'm conflicted.
Okay, so I'll need a motion.
I'm prepared to move a motion.
Sorry, we're in committee. I apologize, but we're in committee.
Through you, Madam Chair. I'd like to move a motion to refuse the application as I believe the variance being requested is not minor and does not meet the intent of the zoning bylaw.
Okay, so a motion to refuse has been moved by Ms. Hayes. Do we have a second, there? Carlson, all in favor? Dissenting, so I can't vote? Dissenting?
You can break the talk.
I can break the... Okay, so I vote in favor. Dissenting. Mr. Russell and Ms. Omen. Okay, so the application has been refused. Okay, thank you very much. Can we inform item number 17, 818 Eastern Avenue? The committee has in front of us plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, elevations. We have a staff report from community planning. We have a report from Toronto Region Conservation Authority. And then we have one letter in support from the local councillor as well as 157 signature petition and support that's been received by the Committee of Adjustment on November 5. Okay, if you can please introduce yourself.
Good morning, Chair and members of the committee. My name is Jim Saad. I'm with Paradigm Architecture and Design. And I'm acting as the agent on behalf of the owner of the premises. As you can see already, there's been overwhelmingly positive response from the community besides the ward's councillor's letter, the neighborhood resident's signatures, 157, and planning staff's recommendations, of which we are in full agreement with. There isn't much more to say, I would think. We would, though, just relative to item number one, the planning staff has stated that the patio shall be located substantially as shown on drawing A6 in hopes of getting your approval today and proceeding with a building permit for that rooftop patio. We just wanted to... I have a drawing here that I'd like to circulate that has a more accurate account of the geography of the rooftop. There are... If I may, just hand...
Sorry, would you be able to comply then with that condition or no? Because...
Oh, yes, absolutely. I just wanted to point out that if the patio I show now is immediately outside of the rooftop bulkhead that's there, the walkout, we can't place it there in a contiguous fashion. It would have to go around an existing skylight bulkhead. There was a skylight there that has since been removed. And it's about a foot raised up. And then there's another one. So it's almost like these two bulkheads sticking out in the rooftop between... Across the entire building. Skylights, which I imagine were pyramidal at some point, have been removed and it's just roofed over flat. If we can put the patio between the two skylights, we get our 50 square meters, same as what's being approved by planning staff, and put this in for record because it shows the skylight locations. It's partially forward of that bulkhead. So that's why.
Thank you.
Okay, so how about we change condition number one to read that should be built in accordance with drawing A1 submitted today to the CFA?
Thank you.
You spoke about something about... Yeah, can you just show it on the overhead? I just want to see what you're talking about.
Yeah, if you can perhaps show us the skylights again in reference with the drawings you just submitted? Uh, yeah, if you can perhaps show us the skylights again in reference with the drawings you just submitted. Uh, does the area of the, of the patio change? You said it doesn't, right? So it's still going to be 50 meters squared, okay. Oh, I, I believe the projector's off. Okay, any other questions?
What percentage of your floor area is going to be dedicated to restaurant use? Roughly, it's not a variance.
My guess it was less than 30. I don't have the exact, I'm sorry.
Any other questions?
So this petition in support is from clients? It's signed by people that don't necessarily live in the area, right? Just looking at some of the addresses.
I'm going to ask the owner to speak to that.
Like Sam, yeah, so they're clients, okay. Okay.
Yeah.
No, I'm not, I'm not suggesting it's all, it's just some of the addresses, I go, okay, that's...
Oh, yeah, they're nowhere near, yeah.
It's a mixture.
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you, okay.
Okay, any other questions?
I, I know Mr. Carlson asked the percentage of your, of building with restaurant business. You're not sure, I mean, you should have some, some qualification with regards to figures. So 30%, you know, what is it?
We did have it figured out, it's not that we haven't looked at it at all, I apologize. I just didn't have that, that information on me. I thought it was part of the application that was submitted to planning.
I mean, would you be able to calculate it from, from the drawings?
I would.
So if you want, we can step you down, if that's, if that's a concern that panel members want, want addressed?
Yeah.
If yes, okay, so how about we step you down? We'll deal the next application and bring you up again once you have the number. Okay, thank you very much. Okay, so item's going to be held for now. Item number eighteen, 24 Mercer Street. The committee has in front of us plan of surveys, site plan, floor plans, elevations. We have a copy revised map, too. We have the cover letter from the agent. We have a CFA decision affecting the subject property. And then we also have OMB decisions affecting the subject property. Okay, if you can please introduce yourself.
Good morning, my name is Chris Black. I represent Scott Shields Architects, and we are the authorized agents for the owner, Calavita Canada Inc. I can make a small presentation or just answer questions.
Panel members, we'll just...
Presentation, please.
Okay, we'll just go with the presentation, since there's a number of decisions affecting the subject property. Just a very quick presentation.
Perfect. We are here to teach, to seek two minor variances for the site-specific bylaw 1081 2014 for the proposed project at 24 Mercer Street. Drawing A31, which is up on the screen and is also found in the back of the application drawing set, illustrates the proposed changes. I have color copies as well, which may be a little bit more explanatory. There is no change being requested to the overall height in meters or massing of the proposed building. Due to the change, the use of a more efficient mechanical system, an additional residential floor level is being requested within the double-height mechanical penthouse. The equipment can now be accommodated in a single-height mechanical space. Therefore, the lower mechanical level will be converted into a residential level, which is right now considered to be the second level of, of a two-story residential suite. The same overall approved height and overall density is still within the boundaries of the bylaw. This does, however, create an 18th level by definition and a height of 59.87 meters, hence the requested minor variance to section 5.4 regarding maximum height of residential uses and section 5.5A regarding the number of stories. The second variance is to address parapets on the roof of the mechanical penthouse, which were not addressed in the bylaw. The parapets are a technical issue required for construction and will be 0.7 meters in height. The parapets, the roof of the mechanical penthouse will remain unchanged at 63 meters, which is the height noted in the bylaw. This is also a minor variance to section 5.4 regarding maximum height. And those are the two variances that we're requesting today.
Thank you, panel members, do you have any questions?
So the parapet with respect to the height, was it simply missed initially? Or is it a new design feature? Or why is the height changing?
It's not a new design feature. We went back and forth with the zoning examiner when we submitted our PPR, and our reading and intent of the bylaw was that parapets were included. However, the way the bylaw was written, mechanical penthouses were a 5.5-meter height above a certain level, and unfortunately, when that clause was written, it didn't tie back into the list of typical exclusions, which includes parapets, et cetera. So, working with the plans examiner, we also agreed that this clarifies the intent of the bylaw and the definition of height.
So the roof of the mechanical penthouse, the height will still remain at 63 meters?
Correct.
Can you show us where the parapet is? Do you have on your drawings?
Yes, it's a little tough to see there, but I can point it out. This right here is the 63-meter height of the mechanical penthouse. The way the bylaw is written is, is that there is a height that allows a 5.5-meter mechanical penthouse to project above that height, which is where 63 meters comes from. And the parapets that we're requesting, if you compare this drawing to this drawing, this 0.7-meter extension here would be the height of the parapets of the mechanical penthouse.
The addition of another floor, does that trigger any other variances with respect to the calculation of the number of parking spaces you have to provide? Or amenity space or other things that...
No, this is a, a small boutique project, and there is no parking provided. And we are currently in the site plan application process where issues relating to the infrastructure related to the number of units is being addressed with technical services, so garbage, bicycle parking. There is no vehicular parking. We are also proposing a number of suites that does not trigger the requirement for two square meters of amenity space. So that does not change those either. The building still remains within the gross floor area calculation that is listed within bylaw 1081 2014.
So you've, you have, the documentation we have, and as you've stated now, indicates that you have filed your site plan and you've been in discussions with city staff.
Correct.
Do you have anything from them indicating their support of variances? Or that they, there seems to be some suggestion in your submission that they directed you to apply?
Yes, yes, we were directed by the senior planner on the file to apply. And in subsequent conversations, we had circled back to have a conversation, and we were given direction that if they were not present or no additional documentation was filed, they were going, they were in support of the application.
Any other questions?
So, explicit, this is not to be adding another unit? This is an additional floor?
This is not to add another unit. This is to create a two-story unit at the top of the building.
Okay, any other questions? No more questions, we're in committee, discussion?
That's the part that convinces me that this is minor and within the intent of the site-specific. It's, it, this is creating a two-story. The fact that it's not increasing occupancy of the building is significant to me. I'm supportive of this.
As well as the height, the height, the total height's not changing yet. Okay, okay, so Mr. Carlson, I guess, is there anything else that other panel members would like to add? If not, then a motion?
And we approve of the application, as I believe it to be appropriate and within the intent of the site-specific bylaw.
Okay, so a motion to approve has been moved by Mr. Carlson. Do we have a second, or? Ms. Hayes, all in favor? So the application has been approved, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, so item number eighteen, if you're ready. Sorry, seventeen. So we're going, once again, going back to 10818 Eastern Avenue.
Apologies for not having that information handy, but I did have the drawings on my phone here. Did a rough calculation, it's approximately 28% restaurant use. The balance would be manufacturing and, and retail at the front.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, so no more questions, we're in committee, discussion?
Through you, Madam Chair. This is, there's a lot of commercial in this area, and I think that what's being proposed is, is appropriate for that area. There's parking in the rear, there's no impact on residential. And so I would be prepared to move approval of this application if there are no further comments. Yeah, I'm getting to that, I just want to know if anybody has anything.
I would just observe that the zoning on the particular site aside, there's similar uses in the area.
So, yeah, I would move approval, including the conditions in the November 22nd planning report. However, I'd like to amend the first condition, that the patio shall be located substantially, as shown in drawing A1 submitted at the committee today, et cetera. And then the other two remain the same.
The maximum area of 50 meters.
We could do it, yeah, three years from today.
What about the...
It's the 28th, so November 28th, 2021.
What about adding the, the residential form, 28% of the building?
Sorry?
Actually restricting the floor area.
Restricting the floor area? To the restaurants?
Is calculated and give us 28%.
To be honest, I don't feel...
The patio, is that what equals the 23%, the 28%? Or is another component?
Yeah, just the main area, there's also...
How do panel members feel about this? I don't know if it's necessary, but...
I think there's, given the compatibility of the use of the area, I think there's probably more risk in us creating problems by doing this.
I'm okay, I feel comfortable moving forward, as is.
Okay, so then the motion, again, is motion to approve amending that first condition, as I stated before. And then, item number three, the patio operation shall be limited to a duration that ends on the 28th of November 2021, so you'd have to come back to committee.
Okay, so a motion to approve, including the outline conditions, has been moved by Ms. Omen. Do we have a second, or? Mr. Carlson, all in favor? So the application has been approved. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item number nineteen, 162 Madison Avenue. The committee has in front of us plan of surveys, site plan, floor plans, elevations. And then we have a staff report from Heritage Preservation Services. Okay, if you can please introduce yourself?
Hi, good morning.
Good morning.
I'm the agent of the owner, I'm architect, my name's Xiao Wei Cheng.
Okay, so we'll proceed with questions, okay? Unless panel members want presentations, panel members?
No.
Questions? Okay, do you have any questions?
The depth, I'm just curious about the depth. You're moving, attached to a... You're 24 meters, 24 meters in, in depth. Is it seven, over seven meters more than required by the bylaw?
Yes. Because the current house, it's a rooming house, it includes 70 residents in six bedrooms. All the programming space is very tight, especially the ground floor. The kitchen is very small, and there is no dining room. They use the current meeting room as the dining room. So they want to expand in the real backyard to accommodate all the programming space. Stay earthy and another, the safety issues for the residents. So we need to expand the six meters beyond the main wall of the exterior main wall. That's why end up totally go to 24.73.
So you said you're expanding six meters beyond the existing rare...
I can show you the graphic.
Is that the existing main rare wall, including the current addition that's there?
The, the new additions, new addition, totally six meters. Because the building depths measured from the front yard setback, but based on the new zoning bylaw, the front yard setbacks, the average of the neighbors. But this current house is setback further from the sidewalk already. That's why very difficult for us to put a more programming space beyond the wall. I can show the side plan from here.
How will that fit in with the, with one, with the other, the other houses on the south side and on the north side?
Yes, there is a house, I can show you that this side there.
Yeah, sure.
So you're directly adjacent neighbor, 160, is that a two-story rear addition or is it one, one story? It's two-story. Oh, it's two-story?
Yes.
Yeah, it's three-story. Yeah, so we do have a heritage preservation report that specifies that the... Yeah, so we do have a heritage preservation report that specifies that the proposed additions are located in the rear of, of the existing building and be minimally visible from the public realm. Okay, panel members, any other questions?
No.
Yes, your quest, your, your variance number three, you said times a lot.
Oh, the FSI? The floor space index.
I'm trying to find out what meter square you're looking for. It says like point two one times the year of the lot.
Okay, so.
How many, how many square is that?
Proposed added grass floor area above ground is one hundred forty-two square meters.
One hundred forty?
One hundred forty-two.
One forty-two square.
Yes. End up with the total grass floor area is five hundred eleven point two square meters. So the occupancy not, doesn't increase, increased, we just make a reasonable programming space.
Any other questions? No more questions, okay, so we're in committee discussion or a motion?
I think within the context of the neighborhood and the other book form, I think what's being proposed is, is appropriate. And I think it does take into account and tries to conform to the existing character of the neighborhood. And they have adjusted their plans to take into account the concerns of, of heritage. So if there is no other comments from my colleagues, I would, I would be prepared to move a motion to approve the application as I believe it is appropriate and meets the requirements of the act.
Okay.
So I would second that, you're including the heritage condition then?
November twenty-second, yeah, it's just a standard.
Yes.
Okay, so a motion to approve including the heritage conditions, outline conditions, sorry, standard heritage condition outlined in November twenty-second report has been moved by Ms. Hayes. Seconded by Ms. Omen, all in favor? So the application has been approved, thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Item number twenty-six sixty-four Salmon Avenue. The committee has in front of us plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, elevations, and then we have four form letters in support by various owners or occupants on six sixty-two and six sixty-six. So directly to adjacent neighbors as well as to other, one other address on Salmon and then one sixty Woodington Avenue.
It's the house directly behind.
Oh, it's directly behind? Okay, please introduce yourself.
Mark Fraser, Fraser Homes Inc., on behalf of the client.
And we'll proceed with questions unless panel members want a presentation.
This, the, you're essentially filling in the cutout and adding a second story?
Yeah, we're filling in the stairwell that currently goes down to the basement from the exterior and then just adding a second story on to the existing first story. There's an addition out to the back. We're keeping, just going up with the walls that are there. They are very close to the property line on the one side. So we've gone with a zero, no gutters on that side to keep it within the property line as per our conversations with the, the committee.
Okay, any other questions?
Do you not need a wall height variance because of the second, second story you put in?
No, we haven't been requested of a wall height variance. We've, we've kept into the, the wall height. It really, the only one that I know of that is, is just the setback.
What about parking space here? You're increasing height to put in an extra story or you're decreasing the parking space?
So there isn't currently a parking space on it. There is a right of way and the right of way is currently long enough to accommodate a parking space. But we're in discussions with, with the planning office. The client does not require or want a parking space and so we were told that it would be best not to put one in, in the submission. So we, we left it out. The, the right of way is quite narrow and so pretty much small, like too small to really get a car down anyway. It's fairly common in that area that there, there aren't any.
Any other questions? Okay, so no more questions, we're in committee discussion or a motion?
I am comfortable with this. The, the change in coverage really is very small and reflects effectively the existing footprint. As far as parking, yes, it's a common sort of driveway where you could maybe use it, but it's in a pinch. But you would not want to park in the rear on a regular basis.
I was just gonna add that six sixty-two is much longer or is somewhat longer than the proposed addition, so.
Yeah, what's being proposed is very much in keeping with what's in the area.
Okay, so I'll need a motion?
I would approve of the application, split entirely in keeping with the area and desirable for the site.
Okay, so a motion to approve has been moved by Mr. Carlson, seconded by Ms. Omen, all in favor? So the application has been approved, thank you very much. So before we proceed with the contested items, we're gonna take a ten-minute bathroom break. So we're gonna begin at eleven thirty-five. And when we get back, we'll hear item number five, one fourteen Hudson Drive.
chilly in here or is it just cold?
Yeah, it's cold.
Okay, 'cause I'm like getting the shoes and I'm thinking, is it in here? Do you find it cold in here today?
Yeah, but I, I dressed in warm socks and warm boots and.
I just get a little bit of a, little bit of a chill.
Everything I know is chilly.
No, it's, it's, yeah.
And tomorrow, and I'm not a morning person anyways, but tomorrow I'm getting my car rest check. I decided to do it every, every year. So I have seven forty-five. Which took me the first apartment because last time it took them forty-five minutes to an hour. Yet coffee, I thought at least this way. And then depending when we finish here, if it's in rush call back in. We'll get some coffee from Nespresso and. Yeah.
Okay. Okay, so we'll start the hearing again. We'll proceed, item number five, one fourteen Hudson Drive. Okay, so before we proceed, how many of you are planning to speak from the parties and interest? All three? Okay, so just, just two? Okay, so just to make sure not to repeat the same concerns. Okay, before we start, I'm just gonna say what the committee has in front of us and on file. So we have the copy of the minutes from the August twenty-ninth public hearing. We have a copy of plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, elevations. We have correspondence in opposition from two thirty-eight Rose Park Drive, one hundred Hudson Drive, one oh five Hudson's Drive, and then fourth seventy-six St. Clair Avenue East. And then we have seven form letters in opposition from various owners slash occupants on Hudson's Drive and St. Clair Avenue East that was received November twenty-sixth. If the agents can, please introduce themselves and give us a short presentation of the proposal.
My name is Enzo Lacassano, I'm the agent for this application. We currently have a legal duplex semi-detached dwelling. The original owners occupied the main floor and the basement and the unit upstairs was the second unit. The, the owners have now purchased the property nearby and the intent is the, the parents are going to move in on the main floor. We're gonna maintain the second floor unit. And now we would like to propose a basement unit within the existing house. There are no additions to the house. It's purely, because the basement was already set up with bedrooms from the previous owner, we are just installing a kitchen. We understand there's been no planning report against this development. And as we see it, it's very minor and maintaining the, the city's, I guess, promoting low cost or affordable housing, not only for developers but also for residents to open up their homes to create these units. And as you know, and myself as a landlord, basement units are typically the affordable units that exist in the city of Toronto. So this is what we're trying to propose here.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, so we'll hear from the, from the neighbors. If you can please introduce yourself and state your address.
My name is Jeremy Gowan and I live at two three eight Rose Park Drive in Moore Park. I actually represent the Moore Park Residents Association in this matter. I actually represent the Moor Park Residents Association in this matter. The subject property is in an RD stroke R one zone, which does not permit more than two units within either a detached house or a semi-detached house, or duplex for that matter. This proposal would result in three units at this address. And under the Provincial Planning Act, the city has the right to designate those areas where it wishes to encourage intensification. And Moor Park is not one of those areas. And indeed, the city's official plan speaks to preserving the fabric and nature of old established neighborhoods such as Moor Park. There have been two recent applications this year to the committee at two ten Rose Park and two sixty two Saint Clair East, which were very similar to this proposal. And both of them were refused. A few years ago, at four eighty two Saint Clair Avenue East, the proposal was to convert it into a triplex by converting the basement into a third apartment. And this was also refused. We can see no reason why this proposal should be treated any different from these proposals. There is currently no parking provided for the existing duplex at one one four Hudson. And this would probably require yet another one-road parking on an already dangerous corner, which we think would just make things matter worse. I should just add that this dwelling actually has the largest FSI in Moor Park already. And that's out of some over twelve hundred houses. So, we don't think this is minor since the city expressly forbids the subdivision of a house in this area into more than two units. We don't believe that this type of intensification is suitable in this area. And we don't think that the proposal meets either the intent or purpose of the ZB or the OP. And frankly, the biggest concern that we have is this would create a very poor precedent for an old established neighborhood. So we would recommend that this be not allowed. Thank you.
Just one second, panel members. Do you have any questions? No, okay. No questions, okay. Next neighbor.
Good morning. My name is Patricia Dwannick, and I live at four seven six Saint Clair Avenue East, a two-story detached home adjacent to and directly to the west of one fourteen Hudson Drive. And I'm here today to object to the application of one fourteen Hudson Drive. As I stated in my letter to the committee dated November the twenty third, twenty eighteen, I have actually seven with something else key objections to this application. This is a semi-detached duplex, illegal non-conforming use in an R one area, and basement apartments are not permitted in duplexes in R one areas. It's in the zoning and it's in the official plan. Two, this property already does not meet the zoning requirements for either density or setbacks. And approval of this application will only make the problem worse. Previous committee and O M B decisions recognize this and deny this type of applications. Number three, there is a concentration of eight duplexes and a double duplex surrounding my property. Approval of one basement apartment will set up a precedent for others that could end up permitting as many as thirty-two more potential tenants living around me. The duplex has no parking, which has already been mentioned. If those potential tenants have need of parking, they have to do it on the street. Because this building has none, and any tenants would have no parking either in those duplexes. Secondly, the neighborhood, it's not in the interest of the neighborhood to approve this. Finally, this application seeks to have an exception made which would improve the value of one fourteen Hudson Drive. But granting it would punish me by lowering the value of my property, a property that conforms to the bylaws, and it rewards a non-conforming use. So I ask you, for these reasons, I respectfully ask the committee reject this application.
Panel members, thank you. Panel members, do you have any questions?
No.
Yes, we have no questions. Thank you very much. Okay, so if there's no one else that would like to speak, we'll proceed with the agent responding to the outlined concerns.
Madam Chair, with regards to the parking, the majority of the houses in the area don't have parking anyway. Most of them do park on the street. The trend is that people that rent basement apartments usually don't require parking because, again, we're trying to promote affordable housing. The unfortunate part in the city is that, you know, everybody doesn't want these rental units. But a lot of them have illegal rental apartments in the basement. And there's quite a few of them. Again, we're trying to do everything above the book and do everything legal because it's best intentions for it from the owner. We understand that, yes, the old way the city used to be back then, that there's no growth. But the city is changing very quickly, and the need for affordable housing, I don't wanna say housing, affordable housing, is in great need. And me as a landlord currently, in certain areas, for a basement unit apartment, we had six hundred and seventy-five hits in the first twenty-four hours. Forty-four applicants to apply for a bachelor unit in this city, which is unbelievable. There is a need for not only the developers, which I know the city is trying to push for incentives to build affordable housing, but also for the residents of this city to open up their homes because most of them are vacant and the basements are not being utilized for these people to live. That's all I have.
I just, so you were talking about, do you know if there's any parking on the street available?
There is parking. I checked with the permit department. There is permits open on the street. Again, the amount, they wouldn't tell me how many.
And then in terms of precedents, do you have any examples of similar type of developments?
I don't. I don't. Because, again, of the ones that I know and that I checked with the building department, they're obviously illegal. So I don't wanna disclose that information.
Panel members, any questions?
Mr. Enzo, your application would have one of its own type, only one of this in the neighborhood legal, because you said that mostly are-
Correct.
Okay, so it would be the first legal application for legal-
Legal unit, yes. Legal basement unit, that's correct.
For the additional unit. Should it not be a zoning application maybe?
I don't think so. Again, the planning department had no comments. I spoke with them if they had any concerns, and it's the same answer I get. Is, we are in total agreement with trying to get these basements as affordable units. I know people don't want things to change, but the city has to change. We don't have a choice. We have over a hundred thousand people every year coming into the GTA. And we're not talking a hundred thousand to Steels or Mississauga or anywhere else. It's within like the boundaries of Eglington. People wanna be in the city. And this is not even keeping in mind all the people that are downsizing from the nine oh fives coming back to the city. This is just new people coming into the city because this is the engine, right, that makes this city go. And this is a big problem, and we have to address it. And with all due respects to the residents, they've been there a long time. I understand, change is hard, but we must change. At some point, somebody has to be the first. And it's gonna happen whether we like it or not. At some point, we're gonna break, and it's gonna happen.
We're dealing with the four tests under the-
I understand.
We're not dealing with the socio-economic mix of-
Yes, I understand. And again, this is a minor variance.
Yeah.
It's minor intent. We're not changing the building. No one's ever even gonna know that that basement is occupied.
So let's get off that it's a basement for a moment. Really, the variance is with respect to the number of secondary suites.
And there's many duplexes in the area.
So, but it's not saying there can't be a secondary suite.
That's correct.
It's just you're asking for a variance that there be two secondary suites.
Correct.
So, do you have any evidence that there are other properties that have more than one secondary suite?
Legal, no. Illegal, yes. But my argument to the planner with regards to the secondary suite is that the city allows you, on an existing property that has two families, to increase by one unit for free without any development charges. To me, that's the secondary suite. It's really an interpretation here. If it was going from a single to a three-family, totally understood, and actually development charges do apply for the one additional unit. So the secondary suite is kind of vague when you look at this in context that this is already a two-family legal duplex, and it's always been that. Now, when we're adding one unit, in my mind, in my interpretation of the bylaw, is that that is the secondary suite.
So in your interpretation of the bylaw, you should be permitted to add two additional suites to this property?
No, I'm only adding one.
No, but I meant if a duplex, each side could have one.
Absolutely. And the planning department obviously agrees with me.
Can I ask you about the floor space index?
Yeah.
What is it without the basement?
One point two six.
One point two-
Which is very much in keeping with the entire neighborhood.
Okay.
The one point nine becomes that because of the basement.
Correct, yeah.
Under the new bylaw. Under the old bylaw-
That's fine. I just wanted to know what it is without the basement.
Any other questions? Okay, so we're in committee discussion.
Through you, Madam Chair. I will say that the applicant makes a very compelling argument in terms of rent and smaller rental units. Having said that, I do have an issue with setting precedent. And until such time that the city decides to, across the board, make a change to the secondary suites or look at different areas where it's more sustainable. Until they come up with a bigger plan, I do feel that we should stand behind that bylaw because, as the applicant or the agent has admitted, there are no legal ones. So this committee would, in essence, be setting precedent in that area to have a secondary suite, which I'm not comfortable supporting.
I would add to that that the, this committee is not here to set policy. That the intent of council in this bylaw is clear. And while the third secondary suite has been approved through minor variance occasionally, this has other issues.
Well, the floor space index-
The floor space index is very large. This isn't a parking shortfall. This is a complete absence of parking. And this is not an exceedingly accessible area. Is it possible someone would be here without a car? Yes. Is it an area that encourages that? No. It's very likely to have a parking need.
In response to that, I'm slightly more conflicted because the FSI is already in existing condition. So there is no proposed physical development of this property. It's all internal changes. And as the agent highlighted, there is street parking available. If the tenant does choose to-
My major concern is the prohibition under the bylaw with respect to the number of secondary suites. It's, you know, maximum. It doesn't say around or whatever. And I think I would agree with my colleagues that until such time as council decides that it wishes to, in light of many of the things that the applicant says wishes to make any changes to the policies, I don't think that's for us to set that precedent here.
Yeah, it's, Madam Chair, I kind of agree with my two other colleagues. The reality is where our jurisdiction lies. We don't have a jurisdiction to deal with the economics or the politics or the immigration policies that happens out there. Our jurisdiction lies within the Planning Act. We have made decisions based on the Planning Act. We continue to. We're bounded by the Planning Act. We can't go outside of that. So, you know, I do see and understand the position of the applicant. But unfortunately, based on our limitation, until the city decides, I don't think we can make changes.
I mean, I would disagree that those political and economic factors are not relevant. But one test doesn't overcome the others.
It doesn't overcome the others. Well, I'm not saying it's not relevant. It's just that we don't have that authority.
Desirability, the most desirable project in the world, if it doesn't meet the other tests.
Doesn't meet the, yeah.
If there are no further comments, Madam Chair, I would move refusal of the application as I feel it does not meet the four tests. And I think that this committee should not be setting precedent with respect to introducing another secondary suite when it clearly is against the bylaw.
I second that.
Okay, so a motion to refuse has been moved by Ms. Omen, second by Mr. Russell, all in favor. So the application has been refused. Thank you very much. Thank you for coming out. Item number seven, so please make sure to fill out the decision request card just in case there is an appeal. Item number seven, eleven Forest Ridge Drive. The committee has in front of us plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, elevations. We have a C of A decision affecting the subject property. And then we have correspondents in opposition from one Manitou Boulevard. Okay, if you can have the agent or applicant please come up, as well as the parties and interests. Be seated on my left-hand side. Okay, so we'll begin with introductions. If you can please state your name and your address.
Good morning. I'm Brian Siegel, the owner of eleven Forest Ridge Drive.
Okay, and are you one of the parties who's in interest of the application?
Yes, I am. I'm opposing.
Opposing, okay. Great. So if you can give us a very short introduction.
What I'm gonna ask for, Madam Chair, is deferral at this time.
For deferral?
Please.
Okay. And can you just give us the reasons behind why you're requesting deferral?
My neighbor and I just wanna have a few more discussions so I can explain exactly what our plans are to satisfy what-
Is there any intention of potentially changing the plans to address concerns or just a dis-
No, just an explanation of what's gonna-
Would you like another, probably, it was gonna take us at least half an hour to go through the other items. Do you want another half an hour to go, you wanna actually sit down and?
I mean, I think if there's a deferral, there could be potential that the owner at this time doesn't see that there could be changes maybe.
Okay, as long as the owner's open to the idea of changes as well. Okay. So if we can have the neighbor in opposition to please come up and then speak to the deferral and as well as introduce herself and her address.
Good morning. My name is Judy Cohen, and I'm a resident and the owner at one Manitou Boulevard, which is the property immediately south of eleven Forest Ridge Drive. I came here this morning because I was opposing, and I'm opposing the bylaw amendments.
Okay, so are you in favor of the deferral?
I'm in favor of the deferral, yes.
Okay. Okay, so that's what we need. So panel members?
I think if there's an opportunity for an applicant and the neighbor to talk about concerns and maybe work something out, I think that we should give them the opportunity. So I would prefer to defer.
Okay, anyone else like to say anything or put a motion? Yep, agree. Motion then?
I'll move a motion to defer for no more than three months, including recirculation fees. Okay, three months or the first available hearing?
Okay.
Yeah, with the fee.
I'll second that.
Okay, so a motion to defer, including three, or first avail, and coming back here, three months of first-
Three months or first available date.
Including recirculation fees, has been moved by Ms. Omen, second by Ms. Hayes, all in favor? by Ms. Omen, second by Ms. Hayes, all in favor. So the application's been deferred. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck with negotiations. Now we move for item number eight, 7 Depp Road. If we can have the agent or applicant please come up, as well as the parties in interest of this application, be seated on my left-hand side. So before we proceed, I'm just gonna say what the committee has in front of us. We have a plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, elevations. We have a grading plan provided by the applicant. We have email correspondence from community planning dated September 10th. We have a staff report from Urban Forestry dated November 21st. And then we have correspondence in opposition from 9 Depp Road. Okay, if you can please introduce yourself and give us a short presentation.
Madam Chair, did the neighbor not request a deferral early on this morning?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, so first, let's hear what the agent, have you had a conversation about the deferral?
Yes.
Okay, are you also seeking deferral?
No.
No? Are the neighbors in support of deferral or have things been resolved? Okay, so how about first we speak to the deferral? So perhaps we should get the neighbor.
I guess my question to the applicant is why are you not in support of a deferral?
Because they're...
So first introduce yourself.
My name is, I'm Roba from Y E J Studio on behalf of the property owner.
Is this about the walkway, by the way?
Yes.
Okay.
I believe their concern is not relative to our application. This is not a right-of-way pathway. The piece of the land that they've been using is not theirs. We have a defined property line, and we're building within our property lines. So their issue is not a concern of this application.
Okay. So, okay.
Could we hear from the neighbor?
Yeah, so, okay, so we'll hear from the neighbors that like to come up and speak first, introduce yourself, as well as your address.
Good morning, Madam Chair, committee members. My name is Mary Sturgill from 9 Depp Road, the adjacent property. I'm here with my husband today, Alex Sturgill. Thank you for providing us the time to address our concerns today. Want a presentation or...
No, so first we'll speak to the deferral. So if you can tell us why you're seeking deferral?
Okay, yes. It's unfortunate that, as our neighbors had not discussed their proposal with us, we only just found out about the proposal through, thankfully, the public notice that was sent out to us. And at that time, we were also made aware of two additional registered owners that we were not aware of. We thought we had discussed something with an owner, but it's not one of the owners. So we feel that we've not had sufficient time to discuss or thoroughly review, even address or resolve our concerns. So we provided them with a letter. On November 21st, a copy of this should be on the application file, but we've not had a response to that. We believe that the best course of action at the present time is to ask the committee to defer an action on the application, just in order to provide us with the time to arrive at an amicable agreement with the neighbors. The issue is the right-of-way of access that's been there since the properties have been built. We've not even had a chance to discuss it with them, proposed with our letter discussions, but no one has come forth with that, so...
And our notice of objection that was sent, you guys got the email, right?
We also objected to...
So do you have a survey that specifies their right-of-way?
No.
Identifies their right-of-way, yeah?
So is your position that your walkway has been there for a lot of years? Is that what you're...
It's been there since the buildings were built.
Was there anything registered on title about the...
No, because it's always been peacefully and obstructed and used as existing.
That, I would suggest that's a private matter in terms of access on the walkway.
They haven't been given sufficient time to review and...
I think there's probably some law around that, but it's not something...
I think when something's been X number of years, but that's a legal matter, it's not a committee matter.
There's quite a bit of law around that, but it's not in front of the committee. So my suggestion would be that we deal with the matter before us, and if there's a civil issue question, that is really not for us to speak to.
As much as I'm sympathetic to the neighbors, unfortunately, we have no jurisdiction over the right-of-ways. We're only dealing with variances.
Especially not registered. Like, if it was a survey, we'd altogether have a different issue because that's encroachment. But because it's not registered, it is a civil matter. Panel members, I need a motion in terms of the deferral.
Okay, if we're gonna do it this way, I would move refusal of the deferral request as there is, the issue in question is not properly before the committee. As the right-of-way issue is not properly before the committee.
Okay, so a motion to refuse the deferral request has been moved by Mr. Carlson. Do we have a second there?
I'll second.
Ms. Hayes, all in favor? Dissenting. Okay, Mr. Russell dissents. Okay, so that motion passes, so the request for deferral has been refused. So now we'll proceed with the application. Okay, so we'll have the agent come up again, give us a short presentation of the proposal, and then you have an opportunity to speak as well, to present your opposition.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yes, I did.
Okay, so, Mr. Roba, you can give us a short presentation of your proposal.
We're proposing a detached two-story building, and we are seeking three minor variances. The first one is, we are proposing gross floor area of 252 square meter, and which is allowed 142.9 square meter, which is .79 gross floor area, which has been approved in the past for eight, number eight, Depp. The second item was the maximum building height for...
What was the FSI approved for eight, Depp?
Eight, Depp, yes.
What was the FSI? Was yours .79?
FSI for eight, Depp was .84. The second item was maximum building height, we're proposing nine-meter, and the maximum allowed is 8.5. Again, it was approved for four, Depp, in the past, and it was approved for 8.99. The third item is the side yard setback. The maximum allowed is 0.52, and we're proposing 0.9. And I believe it was approved in the past, but I don't have the address for it.
For which one, sorry, eight?
Yeah, 0.9. And the maximum allowed is 0.52.
Okay, panel members, so we'll proceed with the parties and interests coming up, introducing their opposition against the proposal, and then you have an opportunity to read. Okay, if you can please come up again.
Thank you. With regards to item one, chapter 10, 204041A, the bylaw 569, 2013, it is our opinion that the proposed variance to increase and almost double the permitted FSI from .45 to .79 does not maintain the general intent or purpose of the city zoning code and or bylaw as set on the public hearing notice. A proposal...
Trouble hearing.
Oh, sorry. Thank you. I'm very short. Proposal of this nature is not desirable or considered appropriate for the development of the subject property as it does not provide for cohesive neighborhood planning or development and does not meet the character fit into the context of the neighborhood. Our block alone is predominantly original bungalows, only one of which has a second-story addition to the existing building, which is why our neighborhood is home to many long-term resident seniors, including the adjacent home at 5 Depp Road and the adjacent home to the south, 8 Memorial Park Avenue. We have, so that is our concern about, so that is addressing our proposal for the variance.
Which would concern our obstruction and use in the employment of the existing walkway.
Members, do you have any questions?
So, number nine is to the right or left of the proposal?
To the east.
Sorry, number nine's to the east, but the setback is to the west side.
Yes. The neighbor at number five is under the impression, unfortunately, that once it proceeds to this level, it's done. So he doesn't know how to address the panel.
So there actually is no setback issue against your property line then?
There may be because of the walkway.
The first issue we discussed.
Right-of-way, okay.
It may have future variance issues there.
Their side yard doesn't abut onto yours?
Pardon me?
Their side yard, the side yard at number seven, how does it affect you?
It's got the walkway there, as you can see.
Right now, it's their...
You looked at that photograph.
Right now, they have their garage there and a side yard.
There is no application before the committee for a change to the side yard that's permitted under the bylaw.
They are extending that side east.
Not on the east, not on your side.
They're building as...
Yes, they are. Yes, they're building their house east.
No, but from where the current house is, yes, I understand that.
Yes.
But under what's permitted under the bylaw...
Yes.
They are, what they're proposing, as suggested by what they've applied for...
Yes.
Wouldn't, they would be allowed to build on the, move the wall over.
They're under the variance.
Yeah, they wouldn't require a variance. They're suggesting to that side yard. I recognize that at the moment, the property or the building that's there is further away from the side yard than what they're proposing. But what they're proposing is not against the bylaw with respect to the side yard.
Yes, we understand that, yes.
With yourselves.
Our issue is that the right-of-way issue that, as I said, because we did not get enough notice to address this with them and to find out exactly how to deal with this issue, it would then end up affecting the variance with where the property line is.
Well, okay.
What we're trying to say, basically, if they're building like exactly the way they're building, then there's no issue.
You want to use the overhead, sir?
No.
But the concern is, and what's being submitted, is that that wall is going to move closer to your house.
It could be in, I don't know, if you look at his plans, he's got a fence.
Right.
He's got fences, and again, I don't know where, we discussed that briefly, but we didn't get a clear answer. We're that fences, but you can see clearly that there's been an existence there for a period of time, and like I told you, we're not too sure. Because if you look at his plans, one of his things has got fences on both sides. So this is where it's concerning, and like I told you, it's the walkway, we have a basement fence, and we're not, that more or less is a piece on the building plan. If they're gonna be obstructing anything further that we already have there now.
If the, what we're addressing here, and what we've brought up, was that there could be a future issue here that could create a new variance. If the right-of-way is confirmed, which is now what we are looking to process, is that it will actually, even with his current one-meter walkway, if that portion is taken into consideration, he would then fall under requesting another variance for that side.
Any other questions? Thank you very much. We'll have the agent respond. Perhaps the agent can show us where the fence will go up and... So if you can leave the photo, maybe the agent will show us exactly. Is there any way to change the projector so it shows the lines? Because I think it's just too bright right now. It bleaches out all the...
But there's gonna be, but the pathway's gonna be inaccessible, right?
What we are exposing is we can make that, we don't have that fence in the property, we have the fence at the back, which will have an accessible path. That being said, we have the survey, we have the survey, and it's a property.
So the existing, the setbacks for the existing home are not in compliance with the zoning bylaw? Okay.
And it's an improvement aside in terms of the east side setback because you are moving it slightly, or you making the house narrower?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
It looks like most of the houses along that street have narrow, or in that block anyway, have narrow walkways. So you're saying you would be amenable to not putting fencing like on either side? Or just the one side? Because it seems that each house has some kind of a narrow walkway, which they may need...
Well, the fence would be going on our property line. So I think we have the right to put the fence, but...
I know you have the right.
But we want, just to keep everybody happy, we were proposing on the east side not to have that fence where the two buildings are facing each other, we'll just have the fence in the rear yard.
Do you not have the same issue on the other side or just the one side?
No.
Just curious, if there is a fence in that picture we looked at in the existing, does, what would it kind of look like, like in terms of, like how much narrower is it gonna be? I'm just curious.
Well, their property...
Would it cut the pathway into half?
Like, would they have to go down it sideways, I guess?
We have a survey here which shows the setback. And the setback on their side is roughly .5 meter.
So their home is .5 meters from the property line?
Yes.
Okay, but you would be amenable to removing the fence on the east side?
Okay. Any other questions?
Sorry?
On the east side. No, I'm just confirming that's on the east side. I was kind of addressing your question. I was wondering, in terms of the FSI... I was wondering in terms of the FSI, so give us an example of eight DIP. Do you have any other examples of 0.79 and above?
Four DIP, it was approved for 0.74.
Sorry, which one?
It was appro, four DIP.
Four, yeah.
It was approved for 0.74. Those are the two examples I have right now.
Okay, uh, any other questions? Okay, no other questions? Okay, so we're in committee, we're going to discuss our motion. Perhaps discussion and then motion.
Well, I think that, um. You know, certainly I, I, you know, I've heard the concerns of the neighbor. But unfortunately, that matter is not something that's be, before the committee. And, um. There is not a variance being sought for the, the lot line on that, that side property. I think that, um. The applicant has, um. Publicly given the assurance that they would not be putting the fence above the property, on the property line. Up to the front of the house, but that's something that would have to rely on their, their, their commitment on that. Now, I think the applicant has given some, some examples of properties in the area with respect to the height and the FSI variance and I don't think what's being requested is inappropriate.
I, I would add that there are other two-story houses in the area and the issue of the walkway seems to be something that I think is affecting most of the homes in that block. Would we not be able to put a condition in that that fence be removed from the elevation drawings? On the east side?
I have my doubts about how close related to the variance it is, but.
Can't do that? No?
I think we have to rely on the word, we can't enforce that.
I mean, I think the thing that's accurate is if there, if there becomes an issue with the right-of-way, there may be a need for a new variance. And that's something that would have to be addressed with a new application. We really can't start speculating on that.
And the neighbor has to pursue that issue on their own.
Yeah.
And if that, that impacts the applicant, then they maybe have other applications before.
Okay, um, any other comments? If not, I'll need a motion.
Through you, Madam Chair, I move a motion to approve the application as I believe that what is before the committee is, represents an appropriate development for the site. It meets the requirements under the act.
Okay, including forestry condition number three?
Yes, sorry.
So a motion to approve, including the forestry condition, has been moved by Ms. Hayes, second Ms. Omen, all in favor. So the application has been approved. Thank you very much. So I hope you guys coordinate in terms of the right-of-way as well as the fencing issue. So you have any questions if you can speak to the staff members? And then we'll proceed with item number 10, 271 Claremont Street. Can you have the agent or applicant please come up? As well as any parties still in interest of this application?
The other parties were a neighbor, I discussed it, and they weren't opposed, they were just more concerned, I discussed their concern too.
Great, so before you proceed, I'm just going to state what we have in front of us. We have the plan of surveys, site plan, floor plans elevations, and then we have a staff report from community planning dated November 26th. Can you, if you can, please introduce yourself?
Uh, my name is Eric Fernandez, I'm the agent and now owner at the time I applied. I, I only had the property, I guess, it wasn't closed yet, now I'm the owner as well.
Okay, so, so the staff members, if you can please take note of that. So instead of doing a presentation, since there are no opposing parties, we'll go directly with questions due to time. Pam members, do you have any questions?
Are you aware of the planning report? Planning condition?
Planning report?
Yeah, it's basically says that the third floor of the proposed dwelling have a maximum building depth of 10 meters, exclusive of the third story on front deck, there you'll, they'll give you a copy. So they're basically wanting you to build according to the plans, but you can have a look at it.
Just to make sure yet that you don't build a full ten, uh, third floor.
Oh, right there.
Right?
Okay, any other questions?
No, Madam Chair.
I think the variances are indeed minor, so let's move forward with a motion or discussion.
I was actually going to, could you speak to why you think that the main wall height variance is minor?
Talking about the height overall or the height?
The front and rear exterior main wall, variance two under the new bylaw.
Okay, so we're talking about the permitted 7.5 and I'm asking for the 10.46, okay. A few things on that. To, about six stories down, which would be considered, when it was proposed, 250 Manning, it was rezoned, but it does also, if you, if you want, I'll show you a map, it also does apply to Claremont, it's literally six stories down. They were granted a height of 12 meters. And so I'm asking for a lot less than.
Zoning or variance?
They went through zoning. Because I, they did a, a development of 45 townhouses, so obviously it was deep in scope.
Different kind of scenario.
I also have a notice of decisions for 17 Gore, they were permitted 9.66, and at nine Gore, they were permitted 9.21. This was, this was my interferences allowed here at the committee. And Gore Street is about a two-minute walk, not even. Well within the boundaries of the neighborhood. Actually, very similar, I have pictures of that, those properties too, if you want to see them, they're very similar to what I'm proposing.
Uh, perhaps you can show us the pictures of the townhouses that are quite nearby?
Okay.
Those are three-story, right? Is there a?
Yes, yeah, three, they're actually, all the, that I'm relating to, whether it's decisions or, or everything else is three-story. It seems to be.
Well, that's 9.66.
And I put you on there. Okay, any other questions, Pam members? Okay, uh, no more questions? Yeah? Uh, we're in discussion?
Through you, Madam Chair, there are a lot of additions in, in that area. And there's a mix of design coming into the area. I, I think what's being proposed is fits in context with what's around it. And including the planning conditions, I, I would be prepared to move approval if there are no other comments.
Okay, so I agree. Through you, Madam Chair, I would move approval of the application as I feel it meets the four tests, including planning report dated November 21st.
So is ten, is no MD with planning, which is 10 meters depth?
Sorry?
Planning report?
Right? Yes, so.
Yeah, so.
Align, including the condition, like.
Including the condition, okay.
Okay, so the, a motion to approve, including the plan condition, depth condition outlined November 21st report, has been moved by Ms. Omen, do we have a seconder?
I'll second.
Says all in favor? So the application has been approved, thank you very much.
Very much.
Okay, we move forward with the last item on this, in this time slot, item number 12, 22 Grandview Avenue, if we can have the agent or applicant please come up, as well as the parties in interest that came to hearing for this application.
Can I have some presentation packages?
Sure, so are there any parties still in interest of this application? Yeah, okay, so if you can please come up and sit on my left-hand side? As well as if you can distribute the presentation materials to the parties who are interested? You can, we can share. Oh, they have it, okay, perfect. Okay, so before we proceed, I'm just going to state what the committee has in front of us, we have a plan of surveys, site plan, floor plans elevations, we have a CVA decision affecting the subject property, we have a staff report from Urban Forestry dated November 21st, and then we have correspondence opposition from 288 Manning Avenue as well as 20 Grandview Avenue. Okay, if you can please introduce yourself?
My name is Amit Barami, I'm representing my clients and the owner of the house. We're proposing a three-story single-family house on a 25 by 150 feet deep lot with a detached garage at the back off of the back lane. And the east side of the property, we're proposing a walkway to connect the main entrance to the house, to the garage. I'm just going to get there to. And, uh. We're also making some, some changes to the, some improvements to the variances. And variance number four, which is a front yard landscape requirements, we, we try to accommodate more green space, so we're going to increase that 43% to 46.9%. More green area. In the rear.
Is that meter square?
That's, uh, I'm sorry, that's in, in a square meter? It's 15, 15 a square meter. In the rear, where the detached garages, we're proposing a green roof on top of the garage. If we add that up, we have, well, almost 70% of the green area at the rear backyard, so that would affect number five.
So I, I believe that green roofs are still not counted as self-landscaping, but thank you for letting us know.
Just a consideration for the neighbors, just to look on the backyard, yeah. The other changes that we talked about with our neighbors.
Wait, just one second, so you're revising variance number four, which is in regards to the front yard?
Right, number four to 46.9% or 15 a square meter.
Okay.
There's also one other, the design feature change, uh, to the third floor of, of the building. The third floor, there's a balcony. There is a balcony in front of the master bedroom and there is also those tall windows at the front of it. So to, to create less impact in the area, we'll be doing the first meter and a half of the third floor, we're dropping the height to 10 meter, and then we're raising up with a small step to 10.54 meter.
Okay, um, I'm not sure how we record that, if that, perhaps you can submit that drawing? The roof line?
That's a floor plan, I can, I can have it redrawn and give you a copy of it.
For next time, it's really important to have these changes before the hearing, because otherwise, issues like this.
It will affect the elevations, yes.
I think probably the best way to visualize this would be on the elevation drawings.
Sure, okay, yeah, I can do that.
So perhaps you can make adjustments to that, maybe the east or west?
Sure.
Okay, um, is there anything else that you, you would like to add? No? Okay, so if you can please have a, have a seat, we'll have the parties in opposition or contesting the application, please come up, introduce themselves and their address, and state the underlying concerns, just make sure, please, to not repeat the same concerns.
Hello, good morning or afternoon. My name is Eila Schwartz, I live next door to the west of the proposed rebuild. My neighbor Jason Gray lives opposite, my husband is also here. We have concerns about the height.
Can you just give us your address?
Sorry, 20 Grandview, so we're west of 22.
Yep.
We have concerns about, not so much setbacks and changes to the front face of the house and maybe this new proposal that they're modifying. We have concerns about the height and mass of their new home, their proposed home. The back end, which you haven't seen, which hasn't been talked about, is going to be built over an old deck with a basement underneath, an old wooden deck, and a second and a third floor story. The height proposed is 10 point, Jason, help me here, over 10 meters? 10.5 or 10.5?
10.5, yep.
Which is above the norm that's kind of been set for the new builds on the street. The new builds are going two stories to a max of nine meters. Okay? While I have my brain working here, the gross floor area, your notes were for 1.11 over the 0.6 allowable. And that is be, almost double. And depending on how you do calculations, if you include the basement or don't include the basement, it, it's a lot. It's a lot of house for two people and two young ladies who may be in need sometime soon. But that's their, their desire. So, um, what happens with our little house, and maybe I can use the screen now, I'll show you two things. We have one of the original small houses on Grandview, there were four, we're down to two. So it looks like this. This is us. And this is the existing two-and-a-half story. The peaks are kind of not so usable, but what we did with our house in the bath, we have an extension, which includes main floor kitchen, upstairs bathroom, and bedroom. There is a south facing window on that extension, which is the morning sunlight, and the new build will block that sunlight. Okay? According to their proposal. Secondly, going back to the increase on the building. So this is south. The shaded area here in the yellow orangey is the increase to the original building. And that's where we get the calculation. Sidewalls on the west, our side, and on the east side are going up over. So our, my concern, our concern is mainly with this increase to the building. Most homes on Grandview are three room steep, this is top to bottom. So those are the facts. I may be rushing a bit, so. For us, this is a major variance, this is not a minor variance. Other new builds on the street and around over the Logan have big, big two-story. And they're square.
Yeah, Pam members, do you have any, Pam members, do you have any questions?
Just one point of clarification, just variance number six, it talks about the maximum permitted building height is permitted at 10 meters. I think you had mentioned nine.
I heard nine, I, that was my understanding.
And, and they're asking for 10.54.
And, okay, so.
Just that's, just, just what our records show, I just wanted to make. Just that's, just, just what our records show. I just wanted to make sure that if you had different information.
But it is a substantial increase. Not so much concerned about the front yard setbacks and revisions there. The existing house is practically on the property line. Both homes were built years ago, and it would be not very efficient to put a fence down that line. I don't know if they're saying that the setback should be 0.45 meters. But, and they want to comply with that, I don't know. But the existing is, is not that. It's like just many inches.
The front yard setback? Or side yard setback?
Side yard, which only, it's only useful for sweeping the leaves away. I do have another issue, which hasn't been talked about much in today's...
Okay, so if, if you can just wrap it up, because you already have five minutes. Okay. Panel members, do you have any other, do you have questions? Okay, thank you. Just before we move on, I just have a quick question. So how much consultation was there with both neighbors in terms of the new development?
I spoke with them this morning.
Okay. Okay, okay, you can proceed, sorry.
So 11A, Grandview. Superstitious builder, should be 13, but...
Sorry?
It should be 13 on Grandview, but a superstitious individual named 11A 100 years ago, so...
So what's your name?
Jason Gray, G R A Y. So the predominant concern is just the sheer mass of the proposed project. And then as the applicant, the topography is roughly a meter above the, I guess, the street as well. So it's just amplified to a greater extent. So for number six, maximum permanent height of 10.54 in the area, the average approval for this variance has been 10.4. So the average height is not significant. It's, it's within keeping of that. The bigger concern is number seven and eight on the sidewalls. 9.7 has been the typical, has been the, the largest precedent, at least of, as of eight months ago. I do have to apologize, I don't have the data from the last eight months, with an average of 9.4. So certainly you can see the conflict between a modern build and a gable build. Have no concerns with a modern build. I have a proposed project doing the same thing. The concern is just the sheer height of that front wall. So having a 10.54 front wall with a meter of topography already with the front setback, variance can be quite imposing on the street. We did have the opportunity to speak at the break, and they made the modifications to their design of dropping it down to 10 meters. And that, that certainly helps us. That's a significant concession. We do appreciate that, at least from our perspective. We're across the street, so we're not as impacted from depth and sort of size, but rather the height of the front.
Sorry, what got reduced to 10 meters?
At front, so it was 10.54, essentially a flat roof. So they proposed to drop that front wall to 10 meters. That was sort of the 10 meters. And then it would set back in and then come back up to 10.54 with the view that that would sort of be more visually appealing to the street. It wouldn't be such a predominant mass onto the street.
I think that's what the agent was talking about when he was...
Yes, that's right, yeah.
Redrawing the line.
We need to see the elevation, okay.
Okay.
Do you know what the norm is for floorspace index in the area for the...
It's, it's, yeah, I think it's 1.6 to 1, 1.6. Yeah, 1.6, I think the base would've been 1.1.
1.1?
Just, I have it on my phone, just one sec.
1.6?
Give me a second here.
1.6?
That's what the bylaw allows, but...
Yeah, I just wondered, for some of the new builds, do you know what...
I, I don't know. The largest is 1.14.
1.14?
It was a very constrained lot, though, so the context of the law dictated a lot of that size. The modern builds in the neighborhood, there are quite a few of them. Usually they've been capped because of that sidewall versus the main wall. So they're certainly have the presented designs associated with a flat roof, but none of those are 10.54. They're substantially lower. Usually, obviously accommodating the sidewall variance to some extent.
Okay, thank you. Members, any other questions?
No.
Okay, thank you very much. So I'll have the agent come up and respond to the raised concerns.
In the package I have, I've given you before, it shows all the three-story built new ones in the vicinity of this object. There's also some very good examples of what's been built in the area. They're all in the very close range. Three of them are in the same street, and two of them is just one street south.
Do you have the statistics for those, though, with respect to height and FSI?
No, I haven't.
Sorry, so, so right now, it's the agent's opportunity to respond. So perhaps do you, can you show us which ones are the flat roofed houses that...
They're, they're all flat roofed. They're all...
All of the ones on your map?
They are, they're, no, 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 not the ones on the map, but the ones on the example pictures, they're all flat roofs.
And addresses for these? Are they in the neighborhood? And what's the address for that?
That one is, I believe it's 42...
Okay, sorry, so this is an opportunity once again for the agents or the owners to respond?
So this is on Grandview as well?
Um, any other questions?
We tried that architecturally to break off the volumes here, so it doesn't give the image of a three-story. That third floor is about 11 feet back from the edge of the house, so it's, it's hardly even visible from the street.
Okay, how about, how about the main wall height? Do you have examples? See what examples you could give us?
I don't.
You have examples of main wall height for these approvals? I'm finding... Okay, any other questions? Okay. So there are no more questions, so we're in committee discussion?
Mass, this is clearly significant, but I think we have seen a good set of examples that the features are common to the area. As before, I kind of questioned the main wall height, but it's not... It's not beyond what we are comfortable with, with some regularity.
Yeah, I would have liked to see more examples of actual variances, because it's hard to see what the lots, like the size of the lots are, so...
Without actual numbers, it is.
This is a large number of variances for a new build. Yes, the wa, wa, wall height is a concern to me, only because, I don't know, yes, we presented with pictures, but I, I don't know what the context is, that's my...
There is always the intent issue with the height variance, with the combination of height and main wall height. On the one hand, I mean, that, there's an anticipation of a peaked roof inherent in that bylaw, but...
Excuse me?
Of a peaked roof inherent in the difference between building height and main wall height. At the same time, we have seen flat roofs are in the area, but no, we don't have numbers on main walls.
As well as, this has a depth, even though it's quite minimal depth variance, FSI variance, self landscaping.
The main wall...
So, so we're in committee now, so it's not our opportunity to speak. Any other comments?
This one has commonality. It's not really out of the character of the neighborhood. Unfortunately, the neighbors are not very happy with what's been dealt with. I don't know if we had a problem with, with issues with regards to the drainage or the extra four rooms instead.
Well, the committee doesn't deal with drainage, and, and as part of the building application process, the applicant does have to submit drainage plans to the satisfaction of the building department. But we don't, you know, we don't have, yeah, we don't have jurisdiction on drainage. I mean, I would agree with you that, you know, the area's in transition, and there's a lot of modern homes going up. For me, the FSI seems like a large number, but when you see the examples, I'm not sure it's out of character, to be honest. It's...
No.
The evidence presented by the, one of the objectors said that 1.14, but that was on a constrained lot.
Yes.
But also...
But we don't know what the other ones are in pictures either.
But also the evidence of one of the objectors talking about, from the research that he had done, the sidewall heights were 9.7 or an average of 9.4 from the, from the research he had done, although...
And then again, I, I would say, I would have liked to have seen a planning report, because we have seen that in planning reports before, where they talk about an average wall...
Yes.
Height, and, and we don't have one here, which... I'm not sure if they missed it?
Sorry.
No, no, go ahead.
I would suggest that we've seen evidence of it being architecturally in character, in a, stylistically in character, and we've seen evidence that larger homes are in character. I don't know that we've seen evidence that the combination of both with the variance to, with the, of both scale and style, I don't think we've seen evidence that those in combination are common to the area. And I think we do have a potential issue with intent when we look at a variance for both building height and wall height on a flat roof.
I would agree. I'm not, I'm not satisfied that there's been sufficient information for my own consideration, that all those things you've said have been demonstrated.
It's one of those cases where no one issue really stands out, but there's just a lot going on here.
So...
Okay, so I'll need a motion?
Through you, Madam Chair, I would move a motion to refuse the application as I believe the cumulative impact of variances as requested do not meet the character of the neighborhood or the tests under the planning. Yes, refused as amended.
A motion to refuse has been moved by Ms. Hayes, refused as amended. Do we have a seconder?
I will.
Okay, Mr. Russell, all in favor? So the application's been refused. Thank you very much. So once again, we strongly advise you to fill out the decision request cards, just in case there's any appeals proceedings. Okay? The three? Oh, sure. Okay, so we have half an hour for lunch.
What?
I'm cold in here. I saw a guy yesterday in shorts, in shorts and a down-filled jacket.
Where?
On the south side. Outside.
You mean now?
Yesterday.
Oh.
And it was windy yesterday.
Yesterday was windy, yeah.
Yesterday was windy, yeah.